Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Planning Commission meeting. We are the Planning Commission and we are a deciding body that has been appointed by your town council to make recommendations on decisions on land use matters within the town. We welcome your attendance tonight and certainly encourage your participation. Ways to facilitate that is we have all our public documents. They are available for your review. If you'd like to peruse any of the documents, we have, they're all available in the lobby. If we do run out, please just flag one of us and we'll make sure copies of those are given. Also, if you do plan on speaking tonight, we do ask that you submit a copy of these speaker cards. They're located in the back of your chamber benches and we just need those for our own records as these are all being recorded. And just a reminder that if you have any equipment that will make noise during the meeting, if you could, please silence those, okay? Now, Ms. Bailey, can you do tonight's roll call?
Commissioner Bourgeois?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Vice Chair Jensen?
Here.
And Chair Seauk?
Here.
And Commissioner Talisfor, will you lead us tonight's Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Commissioners, in our draft package, we have draft minutes from our last meeting, which took place on August 24th. Are there any questions of the draft? And if not, do I have a motion for approval? Commissioner Johnson?
I move approval of our minutes from our last meeting of August 24th.
Okay, can I get a second? Commissioner Talisfor?
I second that.
Okay, any comments? All those in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. It passes unanimously, seven zero. Okay, written communications, we do have lots of desk items before us on items two, three, and four. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to look at it. If you do need more time before each item gets called, just signal me and we can, we can, we can certainly, a lot more time. Requested continuances, tonight we have none. And subcommittee reports, we also have none. But just for your own reference, all of us as Commissioners also serve on subcommittees. And normally, a subcommittee would have met in between the Commission meetings and we provide this time to provide updates to one another. So we are now at verbal communications and this is a time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. We have four agenda items, but if you do, if you would like to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda item, now's your time. I don't have any speaker cards and I don't see anyone indicating, so we will now move on to our public hearings. And the first one, Agenda Item One, is a conditional use permit. It's U-10-016, located at 140 South Santa Cruz Avenue. And this application has been withdrawn, so if there's anyone that would like to speak on this item, you're certainly welcome to, but it has been withdrawn and we will not be hearing this item today. Okay? So the next item we are hearing is Agenda Item Number Two, which is located at 135 Riviera Drive. It's a plant development, application PD-10-001, negative declaration ND-10001. And this is an item that's been continued from June 8, July 13, and August 10. And before I open it up to staff report, I do want to make the disclosure that I was not at the July 13 meeting where this was last heard in detail, but I have reviewed the tapes, I've reviewed all the documents, and I'm fully able to participate. Any other disclosures? Commissioner Talisfor?
Yes, and I would say that I was also not in attendance at July 13th, but I also reviewed tapes and other various materials.
Okay. Commissioner, I guess Bourgeois, you had your handle?
Yes, I just sent, subsequent to the last meeting, I'd been approached by two residents and one neighbor, both of whom expressed concern about tree removals and the size of the project.
Okay, and Commissioner Smith?
Yes, and I would like to also disclose that I was not present at the previous meeting, but that I have reviewed the file, made a site visit, and I am prepared to participate.
Great, thank you. Okay, Ms. Davis, can you provide tonight's staff report?
Okay, I'm going to give you a little background. The property is located on a private street called Riviera Drive that is accessed from Milbury and Rushmore Lanes, both of which come off of town terrace. Project site is 5.9 acres. There's a current project or current apartment complex with 123 units on the site. 102 of those are one-bedroom and 21 are two-bedroom units. We have 164 parking spaces and a pool and recreation area. The Commission considered the proposed plant development on July 13th. The proposal is to add 50 units to the complex. 25 of those units would be affordable units. 24 are low-income units and one is a moderate income unit. At the July 13 hearing, the Planning Commission continued the matter to August 10th and asked the applicant to address protection of the riparian corridor, the lack of story poles on the property, and community benefit. The applicant was working on the project and we subsequently continued it to this agenda from August 10th. The current density on the site, allowed by the zoning, which is RM 1220, is 118 units, so they have five units over what's allowed by the current zoning designation. The town's general plan housing element includes a policy allowing 100% density bonus for affordable units. Staff took the 118-unit maximum allowed by the zoning, added the 24 affordable units in, based on that density bonus policy, to come up with a base of 142 units. The applicant is offering to provide 20, or excuse me, 20% low-income units, and that qualifies them for a state density bonus. They are asking to use the state density bonus law rather than the BMP or inclusionary housing process. The 20% low-income units allows a 35% density bonus, which brings the potential yield to 184. The applicant's requesting 173 total units with the 123 existing and 50 proposed. The northernmost parking area extends up to the edge of the creek area. There is a proposal to extend that parking area to add some additional parking and a fire turnaround. There was some concern expressed about that additional impervious coverage being within the edge of the riparian canopy. The applicant took a look at that. There is the possibility of reducing that somewhat. The fire turnaround is a required element. We need that there to facilitate emergency vehicle turnaround, but the spaces beyond the turnaround could potentially be eliminated. They are still shown on the plan. It is an option. The applicant would like to retain the parking because they don't want to, you know, underpark the complex, but they could re- remove if the Commission feels that's appropriate to reduce that pavement area within the riparian canopy. It looks like about eight spaces could be removed that way. They've also added permeable pavers in the drive aisles and uncovered parking areas to facilitate the drainage, filter it better into the site. Right now, a lot of the water sheet flows directly into the creek. So with all of the drainage improvements that will be going in and the permeable pavers, a lot less water is going to get, run right off the asphalt into that creek area. The applicant has been working with HTRV Ecological Consultants on the riparian corridor issues, so they will be preparing, or they will be presenting it to you a lot more detail on the riparian corridor and what their proposal is to protect it. So I'm not going to add a lot of detail there at this point. There is a request to, or mitigation measure requiring removal of invasive species, which they're prepared to do. In addition to that, the applicant would like to plant some native riparian vegetation and to get that canopy restored in that area. The creek currently has no canopy over the creek, though it's completely exposed. So the merits of the proposal are provision of 24 affordable units. They will increase the onsite parking over what it is now. The ratio of spaces to unit will increase. They're adding a number of amenities for residents and landscape upgrades will be done throughout the complex. The Commission's role in this particular case is because this is a planned development. It will move on to the town council, so the Commission will be providing a recommendation to the council. There is a required finding that the proposed plant development or rezoning is consistent with the general plan. The Commission also needs to make a recommendation on the mitigation monitoring plan and the mitigated negative declaration that we're prepared for the project. The draft PD ordinance was attached to your staff report. The only difference between the PD ordinance you received with your desk item is one condition or one performance standard was taken out that should have been removed and did not get taken out. Staff's available if you have any questions, and the applicant has their whole team here, the engineer, the biologist, if you have any questions for them further into the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Commissioners, any question? I see Commissioner Johnson and then Commissioner Bourgeois.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I just wanted to make sure in looking at the materials that we received for tonight, I did not see any difference in the plans essentially than what we saw in July. Is that correct?
The plans have not changed substantively. They proposed the additional planter along that parking area with the green screen and they looked at removing some of the parking area in the north end and then they added the paver, so that's a change. But the buildings themselves have not changed in terms of the placement, the number of units, the architecture.
Commissioner Bourgeois?
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Since I was the one that kind of raised the riparian issue at the last meeting, I wanted to follow up on that. On the six years I've been on Commission and the two years on Parks Commission before that, I've been asking for a riparian corridor policy, so I've been asking for that for eight years and I feel like this is exactly the reason why I've been asking for it. And it has to do with the question of fairness. On previous applications, we've always had a setback recommendation from, from a biologist. If we look at more, more recent cases like Ross Creek and even Monroe Court, the property right next door, there was a setback recommendation given and then we were, then we asked the applicant to mitigate for any encroachment on a square foot basis into that setback area. We don't have that here. We don't have a setback recommendation. They're actually directly impacting native riparian trees and we don't have a fully fleshed out mitigation plan, which we've required on other properties. So the reason I brought the issue up last time is because I feel like we're not treating all projects the same. And I wanted, I'm just curious why this one is being treated different, if it has to do with the new guidelines for land use near streams and what staff's position is on that.
We did look at the guidelines for land use near streams. The property went through the same environmental review that all projects do. We had a biologist do a report on the project as part of that and we do rely on those professionals to provide that evaluation, but you're correct, we don't have a specific policy or standard that we necessarily follow in every project. I do rely on our environmental consultant. I think they're very conservative and generally, they're very consistent with how they apply SEQA and how they look at all the potential impacts of a project. I believe that the applicant's biologist will probably address some of the, that question on that setback. The Water District doesn't like to recommend a setback. They leave that to the town. They do have an easement and the only thing they requested with regard to their maintenance easement that we, was that we not put structures within it.
And if I, just to follow up, that's exactly my point, is that they leave it up to the town to come up with a setback recommendation and that hasn't happened to date on this project, so.
Well, we did look at the fact that we have existing development up to the chain link fence that divides the developed portion of the site with the creek area and that they weren't going to go any closer than that current development, with the exception of that one extension of the parking lot.
And the removal of a full mature sycamore, that's part of the riparian corridor.
There is one, it's true, there's one sycamore proposed for removal. This tree is in fair condition and is fairly significant lean to it, so the arborist did recommend that it be removed. The other three trees that are coming out are non-natives and they are underneath the umbrella of the greater canopy.
And just a quick follow-up to that. In the desk item, under the riparian corridor comments, it mentions that staff has contacted the Water District regarding the applicant's approach. Specifically, does that include the, I believe it's Exhibit 19, the applicant's ecological consultant? Did the Water District specifically see the comments that they provided?
They did not see that. That came in late enough that I wasn't able to get that over. I actually, we contacted the Water District a couple of different times and weren't able to get a response. So unfortunately, it was fairly last minute when we finally were able to get a staff person to respond to this and, you know, I made a couple of attempts to contact them with extended email with a lot of information. Finally, our engineering staff was able to get through to somebody live and have a conversation and then they gave us, got us the comments yesterday afternoon, so we didn't have a lot of reaction time with that. We will always, of course, work with the Water District and I believe the applicant is prepared to address those comments specifically this evening.
Okay, but I just want to clarify that the comments that we have here in the desk item dated September 13, the town received the following comments. That's a conversation that occurred between engineering and someone within the Water District.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you. That was one of my questions. My other question is, in the terms of condition, where did I put it? It says that under architecture and site, that the, that the plans may go back to the DRC. Is that, is, what does that mean?
If, if the PD's approved, the DRC would be the deciding body for the architecture and site application and for attentive mapping in the event you needed one, you don't for this particular project.
Okay, so, so will, if it's approved, it'll go to the Design Review Committee?
It would go to the Development Review Committee unless we ran into an issue that we couldn't resolve at that level, in which case staff always has a discretion to move it back up to Planning Commission.
Or unless perhaps the Planning Commission asked that it come back?
You could request that, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson and then Commissioner Bourgeois?
I have a question on a different topic from Ms. Prop regarding the state density bonus law, but it's not with respect to how many units they're allowed. I know that we've all read this thing many times and there, in the staff report, it indicates with respect to building height that we're required to give the developer concessions under the state density bonus law. But, so my question is, it indicates that you are required to give concessions, however, if the concession or incentive is not required in order to provide for affordable housing costs, as defined in the Health and Safety Code and it gives this section, or the concession or incentive would have a specific adverse impact on the physical environment, then if the town makes specific written findings, it need not grant that concession. Also, later in the section, it indicates, "Nothing in this subdivision shall be interpreted to require a local government to waive or reduce development standards if the waiver or reduction would have a specific adverse impact," as identified in the section I just read. So my question is, if that's the case, are you aware of interpretations of the law as to what a specific adverse impact is? Do we know the effect on affordable housing with respect to this concession and can you give us any guidance on how we can exercise our discretion, if we care to do so, with respect to the proposed increased building height?
As we discussed at the last hearing, the state law controls as far as the application of density bonus on this project and the concession is at the applicant's discretion, not the town's, under state law. With respect to how to interpret that, just like any other factual find, like any other finding that's required under state law for any land use, Commission would have to articulate facts that they believe support a finding under that provision. With respect to how it may adversely impact affordable housing units, you may want to ask the applicant that question about what that height exception would allow for him. It's certainly the applicant's burden to show that they need that concession to meet the affordable housing incentives.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bourgeois?
Actually, my question was about our discretion under the state density bonus law, so I'm covered.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, at this time, I will open public testimony. The way we'll do this process is that the applicant will have five minutes cumulatively and then the Commissioners will ask the applicant any questions. After that, we will open it to the public. So far, I only have one speaker card, but again, if you are interested on speaking on this item, I do ask that you fill out a card and submit it to us. And those that are speaking on the subject will have three minutes. And then afterwards, the applicant will have three minutes to answer any questions heard and any closing statements you'd like to make to us. Okay? Mr. Steele, you have five minutes. If you could just introduce yourself?
Sure. Tim Steele with the Sabato Organization, applicant. Thank you, Commission, for inviting us back. The question that you sent us away to for the continuance was around the interface of this proposed additional units with the creek and canopy. And so rather than bore you with my layman's terms, I brought my professional biologist who's prepared to address that. It's not a simple question. He's got more than five minutes worth of discussion, so I'm going to let him try to blow through as much as he can, knowing you're going to ask him additional questions to articulate more what you're looking for. Patrick Boursier, as was A.T. Harvey, and Tim Steele with Sabato. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Boursier of Harvey &amp; Associates. I'm a plant biologist and have been a professional biologist for about 35 years. So why am I here and what's the purpose of my presentation tonight? Or some of you are probably asking, as Tim mentioned, why do we have to listen to another boring biology discussion? And I'm trying to make it brief and understandable and cover, I know some of you weren't here, maybe you haven't visited the site, so I will, going to go through onsite and offsite riparian habitat and show you some basic differences and briefly go through the impacts and then describe some additional enhancements that we brought forth this evening for you. And first off, I just want to clarify, when I say onsite, this is actually the property boundary in red. It's a little hard to see when you get into the green canopy. Onsite, there is an existing chain link fence, right about there. And when I, when I use the term onsite riparian, it's, it's everything that is towards the development from that chain link fence. And when I refer to offsite, it's areas that aren't accessible by the public presently. And so it would be in between this chain link fence over here and the property boundary. And for reference, this is Highway 17, right here, and right here is the planted, there's a guardrail, then there's a row of, I believe, redwood trees that are planted, and then there's a sound wall, and then right here is the trail. So the property, in fact, extends into the water and slightly on the other shore of the riparian area of Los Gatos Creek. And these are just some slides of the onsite conditions, things we wanted to stress. This is the riparian corridor, the way it was mapped by the town's consultant, which is accurate, goes around these trees. This is the sycamore that is leaning at about a 45-degree angle or so that's in the planted lawn, so that was described- angle or so that's in the planted lawn, so that was described as riparian, as were these trees in the background. Most of these are offsite, however, but they do, portions of them hang onsite. The riparian also includes areas that are presently used, or they're asphalt, and there's some picnic, there's a large picnic bench right here and plant parking area, as you know. And I'm not trying to say that the riparian includes a swimming pool. That's just a shot, looking back into the corner. And again, all of these trees and chain link fences back here in the background, and all of those trees are within the riparian corridor onsite. And this is a tree, just something, in terms of the onsite conditions, this is a tree that is to be removed as indicated, one of three non-natives, and you can see if you look, the reason I indicated or brought this slide along is if you look straight up, you can see that there's overhang and canopy, so there's, if that tree is taken away, there really isn't a canopy, if you will, lost, native canopy, that is to say. And the current condition is that there's two large sycamores, and the asphalt has been right up to the base, poured up to their base when, presumably when the development was originally put in. And this is looking, this is the existing parking area, and the proposal is to extend that parking area back underneath those trees. Couple of these trees here are the non-natives, three of the non-natives that'll be removed. And again, we're looking at the riparian edge within an active play area, a volleyball court there. Also in terms of onsite conditions, that are not terribly favorable to wildlife are the, a whole series of direct lights that shine into the riparian canopy, which in this picture would be to our right. There's a chain link fence that runs all the way down the property, about six foot in height. And if you come in on Millbrae and turn right and head towards the parking area, that's what you see. There's no trees, there's nothing to prevent headlights from splain into the riparian area. And certainly, if you were a deer or some other larger wildlife species and wanted to make your way onsite, first you'd be confronted with the four-foot retaining wall, and then a chain bollard, and then a six-foot fence beyond that. So in addition to all the blackberries and other invasives in that corridor, so it's not terribly favorable for wildlife movement presently. And I wanted to point out-
Boursier, I just do want to alert you that your five minutes is up, but as you mentioned earlier, this is one of the key issues that we had asked for clarification at the last meeting. I know for one, I have more questions, so I will, but if you could just keep in mind that your five minutes are up, and if you could go through your presentation, and we'll see where exactly the Commissioners have comments.
I appreciate that. Thank you. This is just a slide to show that-
Oh, Donald?
I think that's fine, and I'm very interested in hearing what you've got to say, but I do want to, we should be careful, I think, because if somebody speaks, gets up later and wants to speak against this, we're going to get to the problem of extending the same courtesies to everyone. And I'm not, guess what I'm driving at? Normally, we would ask questions, and that's an individual thing, and we can ask that of anybody speaking. If you simply allow one of the speakers or one of the sides an extended period of time, then you are going to have to deal with an extended period of time for the other side or sides. So I just call it to the chair's attention to see if you want to do anything about that.
Absolutely, and I do appreciate that warning. You know what, what we'll do, given the issue and the sensitivities to everyone involved, I know specifically I have drainage issues. Why don't we go through the slides? You have them well titled. We have them in front of us, and we'll see if there's any specific questions on that. Okay. But I do have a question on the drainage. If you can identify on that where exactly your outfalls are. One of the issues identified in the initial study was upstream, basically where exactly are your outfalls?
Well, there's two outfalls. They're, we highlighted them in yellow. They go, part of the drain is, as you know, originally offsite, and there are inlets along that culvert in the parking area, and they are discharged in those two locations. This is the approximate location on the bank. It's covered with invasive, so I couldn't get a very good picture of it, but-
Okay, so specifically what I would like on that, if you could go back to that, one of the issue is how much permeable surfaces you are planning on, you are increasing permeable surfaces with the new parking lot. So can you show me with your drainage exactly how you plan to prevent the stormwater runoff from affecting water quality?
Well, I'll give it a shot, and I may have to ask Tim Steele to step up, but there are, along, I'm sorry, this is the current condition. You can see there's no curbs. Water can come right on down, as I was there when it was happening. The proposal is to have curbs along here, to have stormwater retention basin three onsite, and there's going to be, I forgot the actual term, there's a mechanical filtration device that's going to be picking up runoff off of the parking lot, and will be discharged out of the same outfalls, but it'll be pretreated in that way, and I don't know if Tim has something to add to that, but-
Yeah, I'll add, we have two different activities for filtering the water. We have bioswales that'll be up around the new pool in a couple of different locations, a small bioswale at the new parking on the south side, far left side there, and then we have a mechanical which will collect, because the lowest spot in this case is all the way to your far upper right, and-
I'm sorry. Commissioner Talasfor just asked if you can use the, what is that called? Basically, if you can highlight exactly where you're pointing to.
This particular, do you have a picture of the proposed improvements? This is the existing condition.
What's the storm flow?
Yeah, put it, get you a little pointer here. Let's get this slide up. I don't know if I have the one for stormwater. Well, just the improvements, if we can show the improvements, that slide. The existing lines is that one long one coming down, and actually, it collects water from offsite, goes through, collects water on our site also, and then just discharges into the creek. That's the one you saw in the earlier picture. It's not on this one, but it comes, starts actually up in here, collects this project's water, brings it down through here, and then there's two or three inlets right in this area here currently that collects, and then it all pushes down here. All of this area right now, and some of the sheet flow off of the upper part that doesn't go into those collections, all sheet flow right into the creek. There's two 10-inch lines that come out right here that collect some of the water there, and then this is an eight-inch line, I believe, or a six, eight-inch line that comes through here. The new project improvements, we have the pool moved from this area here up into here. We have a bioswale here. We have a bioswale there. The water in this area right here is collected off that curb and through a sump pump, moved up into the bioswales. Then they're cleaned, and then pushed back out the creek in that existing outfall. We also are putting in about, from here to about right here, a 60-inch culvert. And a 60-inch culvert is the other half of the MPDS permit, and that is collecting and metering the water flow off the site not to be any more than what currently flows off the site. So that 60-inch, imagine that's a five-foot high diameter pipe, will collect our rainfall that's above normal, and then allow it to meter into the creek at a normal rate. And again, that's from about right here, all the way up into this area. What this also shows is that we're putting pervious pavers up in the new area here, as well as we're adding pervious pavers in the existing pavement here. Those are all part of the math that you need to do your permit with. What this also shows above and beyond that is a volunteering offer on our site. It's not a requirement, is almost 9,000, a little over 9,000 square feet of new pervious material pavers from here to here, and that's above and beyond. It's not a mitigation requirement. It hasn't been asked of us, but that is one of the enhancements that they were offering relative to this issue. Hopefully, that got to the question.
Actually, that does. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, any other questions on drainage before we move to the, you have, I'm looking at this, and there are lots of material, definitely. What I think would be most helpful is if you can emphasize the difference between what was presented at the last meeting and what you have before us today, specifically what is contained in Exhibit 19 of your letter.
Okay. Just as background, these are the originally proposed measures, which included invasive species removal on the offsite part of the riparian area, and then two tree pockets, remember those sycamores that had the asphalt up to them, that was going to be taken away, and pockets created around the base of those trees. Again, this is the original, and then things we just mentioned, curbs, permeable pavers, and the media filtration system, thing I couldn't remember, along with bioretention areas for stormwater. What we are now bringing forth, which in my opinion is rather substantial improvement, is active planting within approximately 10,000 square feet of the offsite riparian. Presently, there's no canopy. A lot of the trees are dead because of ivy. Thankfully, the water district has been in there controlling giant reed, but there are a lot of other invasive, so that's a true benefit to the riparian area, I feel. And Tim mentioned the other things, the permeable pavers, two native trees, additional tree pockets proposed to be planted within the extended parking lot area, as well as native vines along the back fence, and then also to take down the direct lighting and put in indirect lighting for exterior and landscape areas. Those are the primary, and we have a visual of what the vines are proposed to be. All of those would be natives.
Wasn't indirect lighting part of the mitigation measures, though?
I'm not certain. I thought it was not.
It was discussed but not required.
I'm sorry, if you could just state that in the microphone, so it's part of the record?
Sorry. It was discussed but never required.
And so now, this would be-
So we're going beyond it and saying that, well, it should be, and we're offered to do that.
Okay.
Okay. And then, not just the screening of the lighting, but to go a step further, the chain link fence was proposed to be there all along, and the additional enhancement of lining it with native vines went above and beyond the lighting, indirect lighting too.
Okay. Commissioner Bushwell?
Thank you, Mr. Boursier. Could you comment on how that 10,000 square feet compares to the square footage of the impact and the encroachment?
Yes, the one sycamore that's taken out, I'm looking for the number, I believe it's 2,015 square feet. And so this, the area offsite, riparian area, as I indicated, is about 10,000 square feet. And I don't know, it isn't something most people would want to do for fun, but I went through there, and it's, there's a lot of blackberry, a lot of invasives, and several large sycamore trees that have lodged over, and they are currently covered with live ivy. And I did some research online, and as it turns out, ivy, which is already on the two or three large sycamores on the property, ivy is sort of a death wish, if you will, a death threat to the trees. Over time, it weakens them, and they eventually succumb to some other disease, so.
And just one follow-up. You had mentioned, when you're going through the existing site conditions, about the split rail fence at the edge of what you're calling onsite versus offsite riparian, and how that's not good for wildlife movement, and yet, that's what's being proposed, is a chain link fence covered with a vine. So I'm just wondering if any thought was given to a more wildlife permeable fence?
I'll let Tim answer that. The one thing I wanted to make, one point, is that the riparian onsite is really canopy riparian, if you will. And so the only use onsite is going to be birds. Everything else is prevented. This is atypical, and a lot of new sites, undeveloped sites that we investigate and provide setback recommendations are, have riparian from the ground up. They've got grasses, shrubs, vines, trees, and they're freely open for movement. This, the onsite riparian's a little bit different than that, and it'd really be hard-pressed for any animal to make its way presently onsite. But I think for safety reasons, and I'll let Tim expand on it, that chain link fence, and there is a fairly robust homeless encampment next door. I've seen it just about every time I've been onsite. I think that maybe the safety concern may be what, one of the primary drivers for that chain link, so.
He's correct.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Mr. Steele, this question is for you. On our addendum desk item, the noted comments from the Santa Clara Valley Water District indicate that you're not in control of all the property. That would have to be included in the mitigation measures, and that you could only maintain plantings on your side of the property. How do you propose to take care of that issue, if you do?
I do own the property. As the earlier exhibit with the red lines show, that we own the property to the other side of the creek in the area that we're talking about doing the 10,000 square feet of mitigation. We would need, as Pat can contest, the appropriate permits, but since they're not mitigations, it's easier to get those than it is being required as a project mitigation. So, and the enhancements, actually, we have a good relationship with the water district as far as getting that, and this is an enhancement. We've talked with Pat about how to approach it in a way that's consistent with their guidelines for restoration projects and so forth. So we're not proposing anything that's out of normal for that kind of a restoration.
Okay, Commissioner Bushwell, and then Commissioner Talasfor?
Just to follow up with that, I was curious, that fish and game isn't going to require mitigation for the removal of riparian, a riparian tree? I mean, it's not a mitigation under CEQA, but you're going to-
We'll need a permit to do work within the creek area, yes, but removing the tree? I don't believe so. The sycamore tree, is that the one you're speaking to?
Correct.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Commissioner Talasfor?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. So, Mr. Steele, you said that you own all the property?
The property that the 10,000 square feet of eradication and restoration is proposed, we own the feet.
Okay. So the staff report says that you do not, so.
As this exhibit to my right, the red shows the property line that I, the Sobriano Organization controls, and then the eradication and, that's proposed in the mitigated negative deck, and the enhancement that we're proposing above and beyond that, all take place between the blue line here, which is the existing chain link fence, and the bollards that have, they look like old chains from a ship. They're existing, and that, from here over to here, which is our property line, is where the 10,000 square feet of eradication and the 10,000 square feet of enhancement are proposed.
Okay. So what, how should we interpret this?
The bulk of the creek and the area where they're proposing to do any kind of work is on their site. They don't own a portion on the opposite creek bank.
This is-
Where the creek, where the creek trail is and where it's cantilevered out, there's really not much creek bank in there. There's certainly not an area where they could do any planting where that trail is cantilevered. So I don't think they'll be doing any work in that area that's actually owned by Caltrans and not by the developer.
Okay. So that's, so they're just proposing to do the work on their side?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That clears it up.
Commissioner Johnson?
I have a question, Mr. Steele, on a completely different topic. Could you please tell me why you are required to build 35 feet to provide 25 affordable housing units?
The buildings are only 30 feet tall. A parapet design, which is a design element, is three to five feet taller. If you would like us to remove the parapet, we can do that. The 10, there's three stories of building to get to the unit count that we need. The three stories take about a 10-foot floor plate from unit to unit for a total of 30 feet from existing or proposed grade. Three to five feet of that additional on top, if you look at the elevations behind you, is actually decorative, and if that's the direction you'd like, we can look at removing them.
Can you go to the first slide of your PowerPoint? It's got a little schematic of your building design.
Yeah, it's the same picture, I believe.
Yeah, just in silhouette, but you can see it?
Sure.
Okay. Can I use the laser pointer to show me which parts are decorative and not needed?
Sure. From about this point right here on, let's say, let's take this unit here, because they stair-step down. But from here, grade, to about right there, is 30 feet. Actually, yeah, I'm sorry to point behind you, but this actually illustrates it a little bit better. The roof here, which is about 30 feet off a grade, is right there, and then you see an element that sticks up above that roof, all the way around it, to give it articulation and relief. We thought that was an essential to- We thought that was an essential to breaking up those facades, a design element. It's what we took to the CDAC that actually got positive comments on it. But if you'd like, we can look at what the buildings would look like without them.
Any other comments? Commissioner Talisfer, is that a hand?
Yeah, that's a hand. Yes, if we're going into architecture, we can... Let me ask another question about that. Can you describe, well, but it's not related to this presentation. It doesn't matter. So you have the pool. Can you describe for me the pool and how that's going to work within the development?
The...
And also, is the pool smaller than the original, the one that's currently there?
It's a little bit smaller, yes. But it, what it does have, right now, there's a pool, and then a kiddie pool, which no one has kiddie pools anymore in their projects, because they're almost more a liability than they are a benefit, because there is no lifeguards in attendance. So in place of a kiddie pool, here's the kiddie, oop, go back to the kiddie pool. Sorry, this right here is a kiddie pool, and then the pool elements here. It gets moved up and more central into the project. And then also, we're adding a spa. Oop, go back. The spa's right here, which there isn't one now. And then the pool, it's probably 15%, I'm guessing, 15% smaller than it currently is.
It doesn't have fencing around it, so with children, the potential of children, I know children live there now, and there's a potential more children will live there. How, how do you ensure the safety of this?
It's required to have a pool or fence around the pool. We just haven't got to the finer grain of the design and architecture, which would be at the design review level. But it would be by state and by the county health to have a pool, or a pool fence, excuse me.
Okay. There were, can I ask one more question? It's related to architecture.
Sure.
There were, I'm sure you've been, you read the report from the town architect.
Yes.
And there were many, many recommendations that he made.
Yes.
And I have a list of them, but I don't want to really go over, I mean, there's quite a few. So are, where are you in that process of refining your building?
Well, I expect that between the planning commission and the council, there'll be some concepts, ideas, that are shared with us that will be also considered as we move towards coming back for design review. We took a very similar, almost identical to this concept to the CDAC, and I believe we went away with positive feedback from the CDAC. So we didn't try to start over, if you will, after the CDAC. There is some articulation, some color that we can play with. There's a lot of landscape things, articulations with some of the landscape structures and stuff that can be added that aren't reflective here, that Mr. Cannon was getting to. Jim Guthrie is our architect. He's worked with John before, and we've agreed to continue working on the issues that John has identified. So I don't think we're in conflict with those issues.
Okay. So you're still refining?
Or items, I should say.
Yeah, you're still refining, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for now.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay. Well, at this time, I'll go ahead and open it for public testimony, and then, Mr. Steele, you'll have three minutes afterwards to respond to what you hear. Okay? The first speaker, and again, just a reminder, when you are asked to come up, if you could just state your name and your address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. And the first speaker is Tom Dion.
Thanks for taking my comments. My name is Tom Dion. I live at 114 Aloney Court, which is directly adjacent to the property on the north side, right across the creek. When I first found out about this project, I was not particularly concerned, because I know there's lots of rules and regulations about how much you can build around a creek and up to, and including the riparian corridor. And the more I learn about this, the more concerned I get, because based, also on the comments I've heard earlier this evening, I, I don't know that everything is being considered the way it should be. So I have three specific areas that I'd like to address. One is the size of this project. I know you guys have, you mentioned earlier that you, you talked about the state density rules and this 35% additional units that you're allowed. I've read that thing backwards, forwards, upside down, in every way you can think of, and 35% to me equals a maximum of 159 units, no matter how I slice it, not 173 units. So I'm sure there is something in the laws and the rules that explains how you can get, how you can add 35% to 118 and get to 173, but as an engineer, it doesn't make sense to me. And when I look at the pictures of the project up there, it's just, it takes up way too much of the, of the available land space, particularly since there's a good portion of the project, of the site, that you can't even build on because of the, because of the existing creek that's there. So I haven't heard very much discussion about that tonight. I'm sure you guys kicked that around to death at the first meeting, because I, I missed that, because I initially thought that this was not going to be nearly as invasive of a project as it is turning out to be. As I already mentioned, the riparian zone. And then the third thing is, I was looking at the traffic studies, and I am a little concerned about that, because the traffic studies were done before the Safeway was reopened, and I know that will considerably change the traffic patterns in the area. And I think it might not be a bad idea to revisit that, at least do another short study, to see what the new traffic patterns are now that the Safeway has been reopened. And I got 30 seconds left, and thank you very much.
Okay. Hold on. Do you have any, it looks like you do have a question. Commissioner Bushwell?
Thank you, Mr. Dion. The applicant in lieu of story polls over the past couple days has put balloons up to indicate the height and location of the corners of some of the buildings. Future folks, I would ask if you could chime in on this as well. I was wondering if you've noticed those, if you got to see them, and what you thought about them?
When I went online today and saw that they were putting balloons up, which was at 5:00 this afternoon, when they were supposedly taking them down, I went into my backyard and looked around and could not see them from my backyard. That is another concern that I have, is that any of the studies that you've done about, you know, sightlines and things like that, were not done during the winter, during the four months when the leaves, when the trees lose all of their leaves. During that time, there is a very direct line of sight between my house and the entire project. And I think it's going to hurt property values in our neighborhood to have that many new units staring at us from the other side of the creek.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next speaker is Lee Quintana.
First of all, I'd like to say that I think there are more concessions on this project than just parking. It exceeds parking for the town's requirements, the height, the setbacks, there were no story polls put up, and I doubt that it meets our private open space requirements. There were no calculations done on that. So also, as far as SEQA goes, I gotta talk real fast, so it may be hard for you to understand. As far as SEQA goes, this project has deferred mitigation. The air quality assumptions, I don't believe are correct for the clean air plan. There are disagreements between experts. There are cultural resources that had not been covered in the negative declaration, and there's the bonus law as well, that says you have to be consistent with SEQA. And I think all of those add up to a fair argument that unless additional studies are done to show that there are no potential or significant impacts, that an EIR could be required. I think that it's incorrect for the staff to define the project as, to add 50 units. Even their description of the project doesn't say that. It says rehabilitation or re-whatever, and additional expansion. Under the state density bonus law, which unfortunately, the town has to meet, there's no choice there, unless we want to get sued, they figure, they, okay, that's what this is for. I'm going to take this down. The state law says that it's based on what a maximum number of units allowed under the zoning and general plan, which is 118. State law allows 35% density bonus based on that 118 if the developer offers to include a certain number of affordable units within that 118. So he has, he's offered to put 24 units in. That meets the state minimum requirement for 20% bonus, but he, he goes over that, and in the material that I gave you, it's clear that that, oh shit, I'm sorry. It's clear that, anyway. So 18 plus 42 is 160. There are 143 units already there. That only gives you 37 bonus units. The state density bonus law was amended after the amendment from the standard bill 1818. It was amended in 2008 by 2280, and in that bill, it requires that if you are going to go over the maximum, you have to have a specific ordinance that says that you can exceed the maximum that is required by the state. If you don't have that ordinance in place, the state's law takes precedent. We don't have an ordinance in place. We're, I'm told we're working on it. But at this time, our BMP law and our density bonus provision in the general plan do not meet, in my mind, that requirement of the state law.
Okay, Ms. Quintana, you did fulfill your three minutes, and again, there's so much material that I have so many questions to ask you. First off, you sent a very dense desk item to us. And so, let me just see how I understand your calculations compared to staff calculations.
Yeah, let me, let me just explain why I do that. I was trying to lead you through my reasoning.
I understand that, and I appreciate more information. It's just a matter of how much time do we have to go through it? So I just want to make sure I understand your calculations and make the right assumptions here with staffs.
I didn't bring that up with me.
We're all in agreement with 118 times 35.
Right.
I, my understanding is that the 24 bonus units that the applicant, basically the BMPs they have, you are saying should not be counted into their total density unit.
What I am saying is that in order to qualify under the state density bonus law, rather than the town's regulations, which would only allow them 24 bonus units, they have to offer to provide bonus units within their project when they submit the application. Then based on that offer, you figure out what their density bonus will be. Town does it a little bit differently. So they have offered 24 units. They've offered one moderate-priced unit within the new buildings. The state law doesn't give credit for moderate-priced apartments. Does that answer that part of your question, or should I go on?
No, no, that does, that does. Now, before I move on, does anyone have any questions on that particular point? Okay. Now, there was another thing in here, is that we do not have this specific ordinance that you were just mentioning.
We don't have, the town does not have an ordinance that specifically says that it can't, it will or can, or whatever, go over the requirements of the state law.
Okay.
And since this is being processed under the state law and not the town's law, I don't see how that 24 units applies, because even the way the town counts density bonus, there would only be 24 density bonuses with that 100% from the general plan.
Okay.
And unfortunately, this, this law is a real stick, it's hard. It, I think it forces jurisdictions to violate their general plan and accept projects that may have environmental impacts, but it doesn't relieve the jurisdiction from meeting the requirements of SEQA, which I think is, I don't know where they were thinking.
Okay. Okay, so I have a clear understanding of the differences. Once we close public testimony, I'll ask staff to respond and explain theirs. Commissioners, any questions of Ms. Quintana on this issue?
Can I just add one more thing?
Sure.
Thank you.
If it's brief.
It's brief. The staff has changed their explanation of why they added in those 24 units several times.
Okay. Well, we'll make sure we ask with the, any other questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you.
Oh, you were going to ask everybody the same question about the balloons, so I didn't include that.
Did you see the balloons?
I did see the balloons. And there weren't very many of them. They didn't go to the edge of the buildings. They didn't include the fitness center or the leasing center, and they didn't really give you an idea of how the depth of the buildings and how much open space would be left. And just, you know, mentally putting a line between them, those buildings are going to block out the views of the mountains, not just the base. You won't even see a sliver of a ridge. And that's not dealing at all with the fact that you're losing the feeling of open space. And if you go by the 37 units, you could probably improve the site plan so it doesn't impact the riparian, you reduce parking spaces, you have more flexibility of having the whole center of that site open the way it is now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Quintana. The next speaker is Max Wilkins.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Max Wilkins, and I'm a resident of 135 Rubier Terrace. I have came here to meetings previously to speak out against the development by the Sopra Group, and was recently handed a termination of residency by my management without a reason or explanation. And I do feel that this may be a result of my participation in these meetings to thwart the development of the Sopra Group. I feel like I'm being a victim of harassment and discrimination for trying to get in the way of this production, and I gotta say that even with these in mind, I still would oppose this, even if I wasn't a resident there, just as someone who's grown up in this town for 24 years and has a respect for the nature aspect of this town. I do find it neglectful to allow development of this nature to go on in this town. That's all I have to say for you.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Mr., oh, you do have one, Commissioner O'Donnell.
When did you get the termination notice?
This was 15 days ago.
And have you discussed it with management?
I have tried to contact, actually, Mary and Keith, who have been very helpful for me as management, had no information. They told me that they cannot divulge any, or if they did not have any. When I tried to... When I tried to contact Woodmont Real Estates, which works for the Sabrato Group managing their properties, there's been a serious lack of communication on their part to get back to me for the reasons why.
So you've never talked to them?
I have yet to speak to anyone on, based on the reasons why.
And it's a 30-day notice?
Thirty days.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tellezfor?
Two things, two questions. Which building is it that you are in? I know there's like, it's like an L's or well, there's more than.
I'm in the.
The long one?
Long one.
Okay. And do you know if any other tenants have received this letter?
No.
You don't know that they've?
I don't know that they haven't, but I know that no one on my floor has.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last speaker is C. Trujillo.
Hello, good evening, council members. I'm not opposed to the development, nor am I trying to bankrupt the developer here. But we have to act now to preserve the nature of this town and its beautiful heritage. Please look at Los Gatos 20 years ago from today in the past and think about it 20 years from now in the future. We don't want it to look like Los Angeles or New York. I encourage you to employ more responsible uses of our land and perhaps use the existing footprint of the area of the buildings in a more responsible way. How does 45 more apartments benefit the community? By taking away already proven enjoyable community equities? And, uh, this is really emotional for me, so, and why not convert some of the units that are existing into low-income and add solar panels to the building instead to lessen the carbon footprint and not increase it? You know, I worry that the creek, after a wonderful 200-year path of conservation, will be in jeopardy from pollution and could end up looking like a stream from Chernobyl, not to mention the fact that the school district's already bursting from the seams. And, you know, thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to speak as I've been a resident here and in the building for quite some time. You know, I'd like to take a minute to have you guys take these items under consideration as I'm here to protect you guys, the city council, under legal obligation as a taxpayer. You know, the planning has been very vague. There's not, there hasn't been a lot of information out there. Is the planning commission aware of the SB 800 Title VII Rights Repair Law? And are the new buildings going to be Title 24 Energy compliant, an efficiency mandate? I also feel that Civil Code Section 912-F disclosure, I've not seen an environmental impact report, nor has one been provided to the community at large. Also, are you aware of the SB 800 laws and/or the Calrons, if that's what it falls under? And then if so, what kind of oversight is going to be implemented during the construction process? You know, I'd like the name of the inspector. That hasn't been available if this moves forward. You know, I'd hate to see at the end of the day a bunch of code violations that you guys missed as we're finding, they're readily apparent, as many people pointed out tonight. I would like to also request a copy of the RAP insurance policy by the developer to make sure it's adequate to cover all possible problems if there's going to be any development. And then he touched upon it, but they need stormwater treatment, protection, filtration, inspection systems. Will it be the CDS, Filterra, Christ are be used to comply with the Clean Water Act and to protect our precious natural resources of the Los Gatos Creek? As it falls under the town charter of Section 151. And I'll cite Mr. Sabrato as going over, thank you for your time. And all new developments must comply with all these acts, as I've stated. And also, if you plan to form any community citizen review board for the community at large, you know, I'd like to be a part of that. I'd be happy to offer my expertise and opinions as oversight in this matter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trujillo. A quick question. I believe the applicant did have neighborhood, uh, community meetings. Were you involved in any of those?
Those were never made apparent to the community at large. And as far as the visible balloons as well, I saw one.
You saw one?
Yeah.
And 135, so you lived there?
That's correct.
Okay. And you saw one?
One.
While you were living there?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's just as of recently.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Trujillo? Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I do have one more speaker card. And again, if anyone would like to speak on this matter, just please submit one before we close public testimony. But the next speaker is Steve Woods.
Good evening, my name is Steve Woods. I'm also resident of Riviera Terrace 135. I have two specific questions, namely the parking situation. Currently, parking is very limited. In fact, many of the residents are parking in the guest areas and the unpaved dirt areas. And I don't understand how the addition of what I believe is over 100 new units, each with at least one parking space. What are the number of units that are being added, actually? I'm not aware. Each unit having at least one car, perhaps two. I don't understand how the parking situation is meant to be addressed. And then also during construction, if there are any measures in place to prevent runoff and pollution in that regard? Those are my two main concerns. I don't know if they've been addressed or not.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, thank you for your time. So that is the end of my speaker cards. So, Mr. Steele, if you have three minutes to respond to what you've heard.
Actually, I thought I was going to respond to the project questions, but there was one serious allegation which I think I should meet first. I'm the only person from Sabrato organization as a staff person that attends these meetings. Woodmont, who's a third-party property manager, does not. I haven't shared any notes, any names, any people, any residents. I don't even know the names of the residents, to tell you the truth. I don't have access to it. I don't ask for access to it. I don't manage the property. For someone to suggest that we are dissatisfied with public speaking on behalf of a project for or against is kind of an interesting comment to make, and I take it personally. I'd like to meet with staff and that particular person and our Woodmont staff if he's willing, because it could end up being a confidential thing. He doesn't necessarily want to talk to us about once he finds out what it is, if that's the case. But if he's willing, I'd be willing to sit down with the city attorney, the mayor, city manager, anybody you want, to address this allegation head-on because it's not true. Thank you.
Mr. Steele, would you like to comment on any of the specifics of the project? Okay. Okay. Commissioners, any questions that you would like to ask of Mr. Steele before we close public testimony? Okay, I actually, I do have more questions of your consultant. Okay. I'm still, I'm still very concerned about the riparian corridor. And I'm going through your letter, Exhibit 19, with your professional opinion, which I highly respect, that you feel that the project does meet the guidelines that the town uses for land use near streams. But there were, there were three specific things that the initial study found that were not consistent. And again, it was the buffer between the new facilities and the riparian zone, removal of native vegetation, and new paved inactive recreational areas within the riparian corridor. You cite our guidelines and you show that there is discretion.
Right.
But is there anything that you would like to say that, that shows me that the negative effects that this project could create on the creek is substantially mitigated for the benefit of this project?
Yeah, and I think the answer is yes. And I can't, it's not often that I can say that. A lot of projects that I work on, on next to creeks, thankfully in this valley, the creeks are in very good ecological condition. Currently, there's a lot of, the picture I tried to paint during the presentation was that currently, there's, there's a lot of negative effects going on. The lighting, the untreated runoff, the ivy, the invasive species, the giant reed. And I did, I went quickly through one of my aerial photographs. But in a recent aerial photograph, you can see the whole off-site riparian corridor is brown. It's dead. And it's because of all the invasive species in there and some of the treatment of the giant reed. The benefit, presently, the impacts to what we're calling the riparian corridor on-site are fairly limited. Again, the riparian habitat isn't a complete habitat from the, from the ground surface up. It's a tree canopy riparian, if you will. And I think the benefits of the project in terms of cleaning, cleaning up the water runoff, removing the direct lights, and planting up to 10,000 square feet, which is rather substantial, a riparian area, something, none of those things would happen without the project improvements. I think that far, in my eyes, it far outweighs any negative impacts that could occur, but only because the project is within a footprint of active play area, a volleyball, a barbecue pit. I wouldn't say that if, if the riparian on-site was a fully intact functioning riparian area. This is beyond a chain link fence and has been that way for probably 50, 60-plus years. So I think those are sort of the nuances, if you will, in the professional opinion part of this. And it's, it's consistent with the town's own consultant, Mike Wood, who gave an opinion on the riparian impact. So did that answer your question or did I?
It does, but on the other hand, and I don't want to get into a debate, and I'll just make one more, and if you could comment on that. The negative, the creek itself in the initial study shows that it's, I forget the exact terminology, but it's that specific portion where your project is, because of the lack of understory, has its issues. And that's because of cumulative changes in intensity. And by adding more intensity adjacent to it, one can argue you are going to exacerbate the issues, even with all the mitigation you place there.
The, it's true, you're going to remove 2,000 square feet of native canopy on-site. And that really, and you're going to pave, well, let me back up. The removal of the sycamore, that's 2,000 square feet. No doubt, that's a loss. The birds that use that presently aren't going to be able to use it. Converting an active play area into barbecue pit and manicured lawns to parking area, I would argue if it isn't really, there's not going to be an impact there to the canopy riparian. I'm gesticulating, but I keep thinking of the broad trees. That's really the only sort of quality riparian on the site. And I don't think that there's going to be a negative impact there. If you add up the visual screening that you get from the vines on the fence and also the screening from, if you envision the riparian area directly out from the parking lot now, it's barren. You can see people jogging and riding their bikes and walking their dogs straight across. It won't look like that in five years. It'll be completely screened. It's going to help people on the bike trail have a better, enjoyable experience as well. People driving into the parking area, if there's wildlife down and they're using it, it won't be seen. There'll be two different levels of screening, one on the fence, one in the riparian area. There will be shrubs and trees of different heights. And the lights presently from the cars, that won't happen. Direct lighting isn't going to happen. That'll be taken away. And the negative effects of runoff and fisheries within the aquatic habitat down there will be cleaned up and be beneficial overall. So, does that help?
It does.
I didn't, you know, I prefaced my talk and I had originally put together a bunch of slides trying to talk about the nuances of riparian, the different types. But I realize that that's, well, it's potentially very boring and it leads to far more than a five-minute conversation, so.
No, I appreciate your comments and I appreciate your being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Bushwa?
I just have one follow-up because you just raised something in my mind. When you're saying the only quality habitat on site is up in the upper canopy.
Yes.
So how, so how does that relate to now having a 35-foot-tall building adjacent to that canopy where it looks like on a map it's now 60 feet away as opposed to 300-plus feet away where the existing building is? What's that impact?
I guess the impact would be, well, if we take it in pieces, I don't know that there'll be human disturbances or patios out into that area. I don't know for sure. I could look at the architectural drawings, but I think they're windowed. There won't be, there'll be bollard lighting or indirect lighting, so that wouldn't be an effect in the riparian area.
I guess more specifically, is that 60 to 70-foot difference, and I'm just estimating from what I saw on the plans, from the canopy to the 35-tall building, is that an adequate setback for that height of building, based on your experience?
I think because of the type of disturbance we're talking about, if it was some other type of disturbance, I would say not. But because of the type of disturbance that I'm aware of, at least at that level, looking at the diagrams, the 3D diagrams in particular, I would say it is. I just get excited and I want to convey this. The riparian area off-site is just in total disarray. There are mature sycamores lodging over into the creek, and I have some 115 different slides showing that. And it's criminal what's going on there. Nobody's done it intentionally. Ivy has run away and black bear in there. And it's, I see this, I see the effects of the project as being pretty minimal impacts. And other consultants have said the same thing. I see the upside, I get rather excited about 10,000 square feet of native canopy. If that wasn't there, if that was in good shape off-site, I'd say the project would have to mitigate somewhere else off-site. And that's very difficult to find in this valley. But personally, I get excited about the prospect of cleaning up the water and planting the riparian area up and restoring that. And hopefully, that's brought a heart.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Steele, any last minute, any questions of Mr. Steele before I close public testimony? Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Steele, I'm not sure if you were involved in the project, but Sabrato has owned it for 10 years. Have you taken, has Sabrato taken any steps to improve the property over that 10 years? I know there was some discussion a few years ago about doing something, but I'm not sure when I think about the disarray, as your biologist has just said, you know, even on-site, the riparian corridor. I'm just wondering if Sabrato has done anything to the property. I know it's, it's quite lovely landscaped, et cetera. I mean, I've been to the site, but I'm just asking a bigger question.
The, the project was built in 1960 and has some very old bones. We've been trying to figure out ways to preserve and extend the life of those bones, specifically to riparian issues. No, we haven't done anything outside the fence line to date. But everything, we've tried to keep the plumbing working and the roof sealed and dry and trying to keep it in decent shape that way.
And then if I could just have a follow-up question. I know that this building is going, the buildings are going to be green buildings, but could you speak specifically about the opportunity for solar?
Well, in this particular case, which is unusual for a lot of what we build, there's flat roofs that are out of the way of residents' use, and it provides for future solar. Currently, as rental apartments, we're not seeing the economics being supportive of putting them on the roofs. And then on a larger project, like a 50-unit-to-the-acre over a podium, there's so little roof, once you put all the mechanical and things up there, that it just hasn't proven that either. We're excited that it's starting, the technology's starting to come around, but it's not there today. So what we typically do, we've been putting blank conduits to the, to the panels up onto the roof to allow for the electrical lines to be connected at a future date. And the structures on the roof typically are going to hold a little bit more weight than minimum requirements.
I didn't notice a lot of mechanical on the roofs. That's why I was mentioning that. But maybe the renderings don't, don't show that.
These renderings weren't to be exact because, A, we haven't got to the point where identifying the size of mechanical and things like that. But, and it was bulk and mass trees and circulation that these were really intended to show at this stage. After the last commission meeting where there was discussion around story poles or not, this was a way to compensate for part of that. And so they weren't intended to show all the infinite details of the buildings, such as HVAC units yet.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tellezfor and then Commissioner Bushwa?
Thank you. I'd like to follow up with a little bit more architecture question for you. And that is, would you? would you identify for us the key design components and elements that you have in the new, in these drawings, the plans in front of us, as how they respond in context and compatibility to what's presently there?
Sure. Without being blunt, the existing buildings have no architecture. They're very simple, they're oversimplified, if you will, which presents a challenge of what to put next to it without accentuating that issue. So first off, we were looking for a design that was more contemporary, but yet complemented that, and that's partially why you're seeing the faces of these buildings. The color hasn't been really expanded on, which will give you more articulation, or a sense of articulation. The second thing here is, this model of a building has worked really well for us. As a matter of fact, it is used at Aventino. The building's on Winchester in the back, next to the creek, used this exact same model, just the exterior face of it's articulated slightly different, and the roof line's slightly different. But the bones, a one-story flat on the first with a two-story townhome on top, is exactly the same thing. It works very well. Or this is our fourth project that we're trying to use that model on, because it works so well. The third thing is, it did lend itself very well to trying to respect the existing grade. If you look at the building, I don't have my pointer, but the existing building that falls along the upper right side, and it has two steps to it, thank you. This building here doesn't respect the change in grade. It actually cantilevers out to a certain point that doesn't make sense anymore, and then drops down two stories to a second, and then continues on doing the same thing. The buildings that we're using now, as you can see in the back second elevation here, stair steps down, and the carcasses of these buildings actually allow for the breakup of that, to start respecting that. So it helps with a three-story building, get the numbers that we need unit-wise, but at the same time, try to respect the falling of the site and improve the views, as you will, as you move down, and not build this big wall any more than necessary. Those three elements, I think, are very important. It's also the idea we took to the CDAC. They thought the same thing, so we continued to use those bones.
Right. And were any other alternative site plans considered?
That's a very interesting question. We bought this site in 2001, and shortly thereafter presented to the CDAC, and I believe actually went to one, possibly one commission hearing, 150 new units. All the parking was underground. Much totally different character. And there was a lot of pushback on the density, quite a bit of pushback on the density, quite a bit of pushback on the traffic, quite a bit, just immense amount of comments, as you can appreciate something twice as big being added to, doubling the size of the project. So we took quite a long time to speak with the planning director over the years with Bud Lord's, as we were working on Aventino. Once Aventino got stabilized, we went back with the planning staff and talked about what items of architecture they liked. And hearing the density things and stuff, we started assembling again ideas around how this might work. We've worked on this for 11 years with staff, and we took the direction of the CDAC, the planning commission, and the council members over that time, to heart, and came back with this. One more thing, and then when we went to the CDAC this last time before we brought this forth to you, we proposed 54 units. There was a whole, two more stacks of units, and there are two in each stack, and they've been eliminated.
Thank you. Commissioner Bushwell?
Thank you. One of the speakers mentioned cultural resources, and inferring from her letter, I'm assuming she means the mosaics. Is your project in any way going to impact those or change those?
No. Those buildings as part of this project aren't being proposed to be on the exterior, amended in any way, any form.
And yet you're proposing the preservation of those as a community benefit. So are you doing anything to them, or?
We are exploring, I'm working with Garden City Construction, which is a local renowned restorer of older structures, and his resources, and trying to figure out if there is a way. There is a challenge, and I'll be honest with you. The tile was put on normal stucco. That's never been designed to hold the kind of weight that that holds, nor has it ever been designed to hold and protect it from weather, the way normal stucco would. The weight over the years has deteriorated. The chicken wire and staples that hold the normal drywall, I'm sorry, stucco chicken wire behind it, which is what holds it to the structure, has totally been deteriorated. We're still trying to figure out if there's a way to pull it off the wall, clean it up, restore the wall, and reattach it. But so far, we haven't found it yet. I personally like those mosaics. Don't know why, but they just have an attraction to me. But we're struggling with finding a way to actually preserve them and put them back up on the wall. I would offer one idea, is that maybe the best way for them is to be placed in a plaza, such as a city hall plaza, on the ground, to where it's not a question of structure, but a question of preservation.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Steele.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will close the public testimony portion, and I believe there was one question that I feel staff should respond to, and that was explanation of the density. But commissioners, if there are questions that you have of staff, let's go ahead and get those answered as well. And again, I just want to make sure that I had a clear understanding of how the state density law was calculated, and was my assumption that the 24, basically, we do not include the 24 normally in our BMP densities. Is that correct?
Yes, BMP, below-market-price units historically are not counted pursuant to the general plan as part of density calculations.
And so that's why your number is 24 higher than what Ms. Cantona's?
That is correct.
Okay. If I could clarify that a little bit more, Ms. Cantona suggests that state law allows the town, or requires the town, to not follow our general plan, and the staff doesn't believe that that's the case, that we're always required to be, a project needs to be consistent with the general plan. And in this case, we have a general plan policy, Housing 1.3, that speaks to additional units, affordable units, not being included in the density calculation. Ms. Bailey or Ms. Davis can speak to multiple projects of which this commission and council have approved in, all through the years, that has used that principle, that those units are not part of the density calculation. And then, so, to be consistent with the general plan, as well as the application of that general plan policy with other housing projects, staff calculated, did not count those 24 towards the density. So it's the 118, the 35% allowed by state law, which is the 42, which is the 160, plus the 24, which is the 184, and the developer's only doing 173 units.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
This is a follow-up on that. As I understand Ms. Cantona's contention, she said either the statute or the legislative council's digest says you can't do that unless you have a specific ordinance which is subsequent to the state ordinance which allows you to do that. Now, I understand we've done it in the past, we've always done it. As I also recall, this is the first time we've ever applied this state law. So the precedent of value is perhaps not there. I don't have any quarrel with your answer that we ought to apply the general plan to it, but I just want to make sure that we focus on her contention. Her contention, you know, we got this thing tonight, and there's no possible way you could go over this when you get it, you know, basically 10 minutes before the hearing. Ms. Cantona did a lot of work, made a lot of comments on all this, and I have a great deal of confidence in you. So I guess the specific question is, are you aware of anything in the statute which would suggest to us that we need additional legislation before we can follow our past practice with our general plan?
So in response to that, is, as stated in the staff report by planning staff, is as part of the adoption of the housing element, as part of the general plan, the work plan for this year is to come back with a local density bonus ordinance that will allow whatever the town council believes is the appropriate level for, if they believe additional units are a good idea. But in the meantime, we have a binding general plan in effect that projects have to be consistent with. It would be inconsistent to approve this project without following the general plan, which currently allows for a 100% density bonus. As you know, the general plan is adopted through a public process and by ordinance, and is binding on the town. It's basically the, some people refer to it as the governing document for all land use for the community, and it would be inconsistent not to follow the general plan, as this commission and council has applied the affordable housing units in the past.
Commissioner Johnson?
Related question. Is there a choice of law question? So if the applicant comes forward under a density bonus plan and gets the benefit of the density bonus law, gets the 35%, is the applicant required to go with that 35%? Because what you're describing is sort of a hybrid. Well, he got the 35% under the state law, you must follow the state law. And by the way, the town says you get 24. So does he have to choose the town, or does he have to choose the state? Is it legal to have a hybrid application like you're describing here?
Well, the applicant can always, once the applicant chooses state law, then town, as mentioned by several speakers tonight on the commission of the public, is the town is bound to, once an application comes in under state law density bonus, to apply that. That's not a discretion that the town has. We can't go back to the applicant and say, gosh, we just don't like it on this site. That is then applicant's purview to apply for it, and so long as they meet the criteria and this commission and council can make the findings, then we're bound by the state law, we're just bound by it. So if I understand your question, but nothing in the state law allows the town to approve a project that's inconsistent with their general plan?
That's part of my question. Yes, I understand that the town has to follow the state law, but what the town is doing is saying, well, in addition to the 35%, we're adding 24 units, because under the town's BMP plant policy, we don't count the additional units. Okay? That's a town policy. Once the applicant opts to go under the state law, what I'm hearing you describe is basically a hybrid application. Well, he's got the state law, we have to follow it, he gets 35%. But the town policy is, you get another 24 and we don't count it. That seems inconsistent to me. Either you choose the state law, or you go with the town policy, but you don't do both. That's my question.
The general, for clarification, the general plan doesn't state below-market-price unit. It actually states density bonus for affordable housing. So it doesn't differentiate between below-market price and an affordable housing program. So that's where the difference is here. It's just historically, the town has never had a density bonus prior, the state density bonus project. We've only had below-market price projects, and so that's where we always use the term affordable housing. But the housing, or, yeah, the housing element states it's an affordable housing density bonus, not a below-market price density bonus. So that's the difference.
That still doesn't answer my question, that once he opts to go with, under the state law, then he gets the benefit of the state law? But he doesn't then get the additional benefit of what might apply under town policy?
So, we hear what you're asking, and the answer is, we're following town law, town policy set forth in the general plan, and we're bound, so if I understand your question, it isn't an either-or. We have to be consistent with the general plan, and we have to follow the state law.
I see a lot of confused faces right now. Any other questions that, or would anyone like to ask it in a different way? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I want to state it in a different way and see if council agrees. One can litigate this thing till the cows come home. I mean, obviously, when the general plan was adopted, we did not have in mind this state law. I mean, I can tell you that, because some of us were there the whole time. Had it been in our minds, perhaps we would have done something differently, but we didn't, and it wasn't. State law is being asked for, the application of it, by the applicant, which is the applicant's right. Council is telling us, our own council, that that's interesting, and they can do that. But oh, by the way, we have our own rules, which we have to follow. And those rules were not adopted with the state rules in mind, because they didn't exist when they were adopted. But there is no reason, as I understand council's position, to ignore those rules, simply because you could make a good argument that had people been thinking, that's unfair, had people known what would happen in the future, they might have done something differently. So my only issue is, do I follow council's advice or not? And I tend to think, if you don't follow your lawyer's advice, then you have yourself for a client, and there are famous sayings about that.
Any other comments or questions of staff? Commissioner Talisfor?
Yeah, just a clarification. The project, though, the one concession it does, it has been awarded is the height. Is that correct?
That's correct. They could also ask for the height deviation through the PD, but they are, it is being asked for as a concession.
Okay. But that doesn't excuse them. I mean, they do have to follow our design building guidelines, correct? They do fall under that, this project would?
Our residential design guidelines?
Well, yes, or the town's general building design principles. Thank you. And then can we, I just want to be crystal clear, what are we approving tonight, for sure?
So this is a plan development, and correct me, Ms. Davis, so this is a recommendation to town council? Okay. And so as part of the recommendation, I am going to ask you guys to turn to, in our staff report, on page seven, it's a recommendation for approval, you have to make the required findings, that's in Exhibit 16, the mitigated NEG deck with the mitigation monitoring plan, and the plan develop ordinance that is attached is Exhibit 24. Now, Ms. Davis, you mentioned there was something that was changed with that exhibit?
Yes, we just deleted one performance standard, and so the one that's attached to the desk item is actually the correct version.
Okay. So again, it's a recommendation with those elements.
So we're not, so architecture is not being considered at this time, because I understand we're still in process?
Correct. But again, in the staff report, as it currently states, architecture, future architecture in sight would go to DRC.
It said May.
May.
So we can, but we can, as I understand, we can also ask for that to be changed. Recommend that that be changed.
You can recommend changes to any of the performance standards, either by modifying, adding, whatever is appropriate.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell, then Commissioner Smith?
My understanding on the height is, the applicant has said, you want to lose five feet, you can lose five feet. We see the five feet we lose. So, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to lop off something that makes the project look better. I'm troubled by the density. I'm troubled by a lot of things on this. But as the state often has been doing lately, they tie our hands. They do that with our schools, they do that now with this density. We sit here trying to struggle with that, but personally, I don't see how you can say, let's cut the design feature off, when you've got 30 feet of the same building there. All you're doing is making it look worse. The same problem, so.
Commissioner Smith, sorry about that.
Well, this is a very simple question.
Well, this is a very simple question, but it was raised by the public, so I'd like to get an answer on the record. And that is about the traffic impact report. The traffic impact report was done in May of 2010. Safeway was not opened, as many of us know. So there's going to be an additional 324 trips just based on the traffic report. And all I'd like staff to do is just comment on, in their opinion, if this is something that is a, is an issue that should be addressed.
When we look at traffic, part of that is accumulative impact analysis. We take into consideration pending and approved projects. So the Safeway was considered.
I didn't see Safeway on the list that it was considered, but.
I believe, I believe it is on that list.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Did staff indicate, well, a lot of head nodding was over there.
Mr. Rouhani, do you mind just stating for the record?
It is. Safeway was included.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions or comments that you'd like to make? Commissioner Erickson, is that a, no. Commissioner Bouchois?
I'll make some general comments. I think there's obviously a lot of things to be concerned about of this project. And I think we all think a smaller project would alleviate a lot of those concerns, riparian issue, the traffic issues, the parking issue, the visual impacts. You know, this is a site that can accommodate some more units, and it can accommodate some below-market. I think it's a good place for that. But our hands are somewhat tied. What I'm concerned about is along the lines of what Commissioner Jensen was raising about, it kind of feels like, like double dipping into two, two different policies that allow for bonuses. I appreciate the efforts that have been made addressing the riparian issues. I like the direction it's going. But again, we don't have a plan in place. We have, we have a letter and some verbal promises. So again, approving a project without an actual mitigation plan in place is something we're very hesitant to do. So those are, those are my main concerns. Just want to throw that out there.
Commissioner Jensen?
I share Commissioner Bouchois' concerns with respect to the riparian corridor, which was our main issue last time. And so my fundamental issue is that what we got back tonight after a couple of months was essentially the same project with some permeable pavers added and a letter from a biologist. And that's nice, but there's no specific addressing of the concerns that were raised. Nothing has been moved back. Nothing has been particularly changed. It is, yes, once the applicant says, yes, I wanted the density bonus under the state law, yes, our hands are tied to a certain extent. But the applicant could always choose to develop something a little less dense. But I share the concerns that Commissioner Bouchois raised.
Any other comments?
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and share mine. I was part of the CDAC committee that the applicant referred to. I didn't realize there were so many iterations, but I did get involved in 2010. And if you look at the, I believe it's attached as exhibit seven when we have the minutes, it doesn't go into detailed minutes, but preservation of Los Cuidos Creek is important. That specifically was my comment. And at that time, the land use guidelines that we have, guidelines for land use near streams was already in effect. And they were guidelines that we had already started using with several projects by that point. And I remember specifically at that meeting that, yes, we had conceptual development plans, but first and foremost, those guidelines had to be met, and that was all part of the initial studies. And so right now, as we're discussing the project, I don't think I can even make the findings that the initial study is approvable, in my opinion. And without an initial study and a positive approval of initial study, I don't think I can even go into the details of the project, whether, regardless of the state density bonus law and the concessions that we're forced to look at. Commissioner, tell us four.
My comments on this, I look at this as still as a work in progress. And I was also at that CDAC meeting, and we saw a totally different project. So I can't say that the comments maybe went as far as we would have liked them to. You know, I think that this is a very formidable task you have, you know, to design a fairly high dense housing project without conveying that kind of, that dense feeling and trying to mitigate that visual size and bulk as much as possible. But for such a large project, what we've had in other PDs lately have been very specific drawings, which really help us make a better decision. So I agree with, with what's been said so far. I would just like to add, we need to take this before we can really look at this. I had, I had so many questions about architecture and the livability of this site. I won't even address them tonight, but we just need to look at this. Even though you may think that the 1960s apartment building is old, it is a style. And quite frankly, there's a lot of 1960 buildings that people desire to live in. It's sort of that retro feeling again. They like it. So, and there were some outstanding elements of those buildings that I did not see in this project. And so to me, what I see when I look at this project, I'm just going to throw this out there for you to think about, is I see two different projects on one site. And I don't see one enhancing the other, and I'm really disappointed in that. You have some good starts, but along with the town architects' comments and my, and what I've just said, I can't possibly make a recommendation for this right now. One of the outstanding features of the original building actually are the recessed balconies that provide an outdoor space for people. I don't see any of that in this at all. I see overhanging balconies. I don't even know the size of them. I couldn't tell. So I, the details here, it's a work in progress.
Commissioner O'Donnell, and then Commissioner Erickson?
The only thing, I guess, that I would be troubled about on this project is something that I, that this commission has no control over, and that is the application of what is effectively two bonus laws. I think there's a very good argument that maybe they shouldn't be cumulative. But council tells us, her opinion is, that until something is done, they are cumulative. And I'm going to accept that. That being the case, we're spending, well, as I've, what I've heard so far are two things. One relates to the environmental aspects, particularly the creek channel and all that. The other relates to architecture and site approval, which we're not now doing. And we could ask to have it come back to us, but we're not there. So I would not, not go forward on this project because of something that is not before us. As far as the taking care of the creek, what I've heard tonight is that creek will be a lot better off with this project than it presently is. So if nothing happened, everybody said 60s are great, let's leave everything alone, it will continue to die. The ivy will continue to grow. The reeds will continue to be exterminated by the, by the county. I don't look at that as a benefit. To put in a five-foot drain to take care of these problems is a real plus, not something I, I can tell that the applicant is mandated to do if he doesn't do the project. So it certainly is the flavor tonight that this will not get recommended affirmatively. But I think we're all saying very good ideas, but I don't believe that we have control over the key issue, and that is the density. I'd like to see this project less dense. That would open up better parking. It would do a number of things. But when we talk about the canopy, taking out what we're taking out, I don't consider that to be, in light of what they're saying and they're trading for it, I don't consider that to be a big issue. The biggest issue is something, as I said before, that I don't think we have any power over. So I just want to, since we're making a recommendation of the council, I want at least my view on that to be clear to the council.
Commissioner Erickson?
To the extent that I understand what was before us tonight, architectural site application was not before us tonight. So whether the commission in its action would want to recommend modification in the plan development ordinance that would require to come back to the commission so the commission could have its say about architectural site and, or would want to leave it with the DRC would be, is an issue that we should talk about, not, but the architectural, specific architectural elements, since that's not before us tonight. The two issues that are before us tonight have to do with whether we would recommend, as I understand it, the negative declaration to the town council, whether we could accept that. I too, like Commissioner O'Donnell, heard some public testimony from a biologist who clearly has greater expertise to comment on the issues that I have. And the two commissioners, which I have the great, the most respect for their expertise, Commissioner Bouchois and Commissioner Sayak, on these particular issues, and I generally defer to them because of their greater expertise, however, have expressed concerns at the same time that the applicant and their expert biologist have suggested to us that this will improve the conditions, as Commissioner O'Donnell said. So I'm a bit in a quandary about how do I make a judgment between the two experts who sit on the commission with me versus the judgment, the opinion from the consultant. And so I'm not comfortable, would not be comfortable with moving forward a recommendation to accept the negative declaration tonight. As both Ms. Bailey and Judith Prop could tell you, I've spent a lot of time before July 13th reading both the density bonus law of the state, reviewing case law with them. I probably cost the town a considerable amount of money for the amount of hours that I had them put in with me on that. I'm actually very comfortable with their interpretation of the way you count the units. So I don't consider it double dipping to the extent that I understand the law and how it interacts with the town's ordinances. So I would not have a problem. I don't have a problem with 35-foot heights. So I don't, and I think the fact that the, the additional number of units does include a substantial number, substantial contribution to affordable housing in this town is a significant community benefit in and of itself. So if, if we could move forward with the, the negative declaration, I would, which I am not prepared to support, I would, however, be prepared to support the project and the plan development ordinance.
Commissioner Jensen, who else had their hand up? Okay. Commissioner Smith, did you have your hand up earlier? Okay, Commissioner Jensen?
I just have a process question. If the commission were to determine that it could not make findings necessary to support the mitigated, negative declaration, would any other findings or recommendation be appropriate or necessary, or would that be the end? I mean, it would go to town council in any event, right? Because it's just a recommendation. But if we were to, to determine that we can't make those findings, then what happens?
Then you would have to recommend denial of the project.
So I'll go one step further. As you indicated, even if you recommend denial of the project, the project, because it's a recommendation to council, still moves forward. And as you've heard from the council, as well as staff, that council usually finds your comments helpful as they move forward. So you may want to consider that, even if you can't reach a consensus.
Commissioner, tell us four.
Well, in that, we are not looking at architecture in site. That's true. My comments, though, is regarding the fact that it's asking for requesting approval for renovation and expansion of an existing. And just because there's a condition that says it may or may not come back to the planning commission, it may go on to the design review committee, I made those comments. In case I can't get everybody to agree with me that, that if it does go through the process, that the architecture in site needs to come back to the planning commission. Maybe we should have that discussion.
With any, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I assume that discussion would be comments from each of us saying, if the council, unlike the commission, as I count noses, favors the project and therefore goes forward, some of the commissioners, some, all, whatever, would love to have it come back to us for architectural site approval, in which case council could say, fine, or the council could say, no. So, but I just, what we're trying to get here, as near as I could tell, is some kind of motion. And we have two matters before us, I guess. One is a negative declaration, and if we said we don't find enough here to support the negative declaration, now I guess that would be one motion. Now, one of the questions was, well, if you, if you say you don't, then why should you go on to the next? And maybe you shouldn't, as far as a motion is concerned, I don't know. But, but I, I think if anybody feels they haven't made their position known on the substantive issue, now would be the right time to do it. But I'm kind of wondering who that person is.
Anyone who would like to make a motion?
Okay. Well, then I'll make the motion, just to move this along. I, I will make the recommendation to town council that the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring plan is unacceptable, and I recommend denial. I understand that this is a recommendation to town council, and that several comments were made, particularly with architecture in site, with height. And I would ask that the council take those into consideration when making the ultimate decision. But that is my recommendation. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Jensen?
I'll second that. And with the chair, be willing to add to the motion because the motion indicates that the mitigated negative declaration is not acceptable, that we also recommend denial of the project as it exists now.
Yes, the maker of the motion would make that acceptable.
So I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell, do you have a comment?
Yes. I don't know whether it would be required, and I guess I can ask council on that. But normally, at least it would be helpful, certainly it would be to me, to know why the negative, mitigated negative declaration is not adequate. I have not heard that focused upon. In other words, we have a negative declaration before us, and a number of us find that that is inadequate. But I have not heard for record's sake, in any sense, why that's inadequate. So it would sure help me if I knew why my fellow commissioners find that negative declaration to be inadequate, and it might even help the council.
Okay. I will, I'll go ahead and get it started. I will find that the mitigated negative declaration is incomplete because, first of all, it doesn't follow the guidelines, let me get the correct terminology, the guidelines and standards for, what is our document? Our land use guidelines, basically. In the initial study, it says there is no consistency. Santa Clara Valley Water District also concurred with that. I understand that there is mitigation, and I accept the mitigation, and do feel that it does provide, but when I'm looking at the actual intent of the project, I'm looking at the merits of it. And mitigation is one thing, but prevention of aggravating, exacerbating those problems, I feel have not been met with it, and therefore cannot support the initial study and the mitigated neg deck. And one other thing I'd like to comment is that within, we've had discussion of following general plan guidelines. In the general plan, it states the several documents that all develop must meet. And one of those, again, is the land, is land use near streams, and it does not meet those guidelines. Commissioner Bouchois?
Thank you. I was going to actually ask the same clarification, and I'm going to support the motion. But the reason I didn't make a motion is because I knew you had specific reasons, and I wanted to hear those. So I appreciate Commissioner O'Donnell asking that clarification. I'd like to add to the record of why I'm supporting the motion is I'm also concerned about the issue of deferred mitigation. We've heard some very positive things about what they're going to do to the riparian corridor to mitigate for these impacts. But we don't have a plan in front of us. And we have, we have required that of all other applicants that have had riparian impacts. We've always had a mitigation plan to go along with that. We don't have that right now. We have a letter, and we have some great concepts that were presented before us in a PowerPoint presentation. But that's not something I can, I can approve. So I'm concerned about the deferred mitigation aspect of that.
Commissioner Jensen, as a second, or did you have any additional comments you'd like to make?
No, I agree with the chair and Commissioner Bouchois.
Okay. Commissioner Erickson, I saw your hand up.
I guess one other concern that, while I'll support the motion, I'm still not convinced that providing, while we have discretion, as I understand from the town staff, under the guidelines to ensure land use near streams about whether we need to provide a buffer between the new facilities and the riparian zone, I'm, I'm not comfortable in using our discretion to not
discretion to not have that buffer.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, and again, it's recommended for denial, and I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So it passes 6-1 with Commissioner O'Donnell dissenting. Okay, and as Commissioner, as Commissioner, excuse me, as Ms. Bailey stated, this is going directly to council, so there is no appeal rights. And will this just be notified when it appears on their council agenda?
Yes, and then the application will have the normal public note.
Thank you. Okay, I have a request for a five-minute break. Also, I'd like to get the temperature fixed again. So let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll proceed to agenda item number three.
Thank you for that brief intermission. We are now at item number three. It is Plan Development Application, PD-10-004 Negative Declaration ND-10-002 Located at 16213 Los Gatos Boulevard. Before we open it up to Suzanne Davis, Commissioner Telsford, do you have any comments to make?
Yeah, I do. Tonight, I'm going to recuse myself on the basis that I believe if I participated, there could be an appearance of bias or unfairness. As the Commission knows, it's been consistent with me that I've been recusing myself on other Santa Clara development proposals. Thank you.
Okay, so Commissioner Telsford, we'll have you go to the back and then we'll call you when the next agenda item is called. And actually, while we're waiting for her, are there any disclosures anyone else would like to make? I would like to mention that I've been to the site. And Commissioners, I think all of us have gotten email correspondence from interested parties that we have not responded to but forwarded to staff. But if there are any additional disclosures anyone would like to make, please do so. Commissioner Johnson?
With respect to the email communication that the Chair may be talking about, I did actually respond to one of them, just basically indicating that I was not declining the invitation to meet because it was my policy not to meet with anyone prior to the public hearing.
Okay. Any other disclosures? Okay, great. Ms. Davis, can you present tonight's staff report?
You did receive a number of correspondence. Some of it is attached to the staff report and then some is also on the desk item that you received today. A lot of the work in the desk item was to try and address some of those comments we got from the public. And so it was almost a second report. Briefly, there were some comments about traffic and there were some specific comments about the street width and tree removals. Those have been addressed by staff and by the applicant's attorney. We had a couple of issues raised by Green Hills Preschool, which is located on George Street across from the project. One of them is regarding the redwood tree that's located out in front of their site in the public right of way. That is something that staff will work with them on as a separate issue. It is not related to the project. They have some concerns about the tree and the safety and damaging the sidewalk. And we'll be working with the school directly on that tree and whether it can be removed. It is off the project site. And they also had a concern about parking, wanting to make sure that patrons of the school can park to get for drop-off and pickup. And one of the suggestions was that we look at maybe doing some parking restrictions out there on the west side of George. And again, that's something that staff can discuss with the school independently and we might end up doing it, you know, a one or two-hour parking zone or 30-minute zone or something on that side. But we'll handle that as a separate item. There's also a bunch of information on land use because we had a number of residents explain, express concern about residential versus commercial on this site. One of the things that was attached to the desk item is some traffic generation rates for various land uses, including an all-residential project, a multifamily residential project, senior housing, all retail, or a combined project of retail and housing. And as you can see, the traffic generation rates are lowest for residential uses. So that was an important thing to provide. We do have our Economic Vitality Manager here this evening in case there's any questions on this site being appropriate or not for commercial. We did provide a lot of information about why it's not an ideal commercial location. The auto dealership was successful for a number of years there, but there's some specific reasons why. That was a destination retail type of business and that's why it made it for as long as it did. This site was previously designated as an affordable housing overlay zone, potential location. And it also was on our housing sites inventory for housing redevelopment, as were some of the other auto dealerships that have been closed. The only reason it's no longer on the list is because we have a pending development proposal. We've removed this site and the Swanson Ford site. It wasn't taken off because it was determined to be inappropriate for housing. It was just we felt we had a proposal for development and so we removed it because we're not going to go put an affordable housing overlay zone on something that's already in the process. If we had put that overlay on it, it would have been a 20-unit-to-acre minimum. This particular project did not require a traffic study because based on town traffic policy, we go to the previous use, which was an auto dealership, which obviously generated a lot more use than a single-family would. The applicant voluntarily prepared a traffic study and that information's all summarized in the mitigated negative declaration. The couple of things about traffic that I did want to highlight is we did, as mentioned for the previous project, we did look at existing and proposed projects when looking at communal traffic impact. We considered the site versus the former, when the, once the dealership moved away, there was just a service component left. So we compared it to the service component, which was the more recent use for sequoia perspective. We also looked at a zero baseline. And the traffic policy looks at the highest use. So we, when we're looking for traffic mitigation fees, we do evaluate it against the former auto dealership. So from that perspective, there's not a traffic impact. And when you look at it next to the service use, it generates a few more trips during the PM and AM peaks. It's very, very nominal. So the bottom line is this use will generate less traffic with a residential versus a commercial use or a mixed use. The project location is the entire block bound by Los Gatos Boulevard, Mitchell Avenue, George Street, and Roberts Road. The dealership left the site and then the service component continued operating through fall of last year. The proposal is to demolish the existing buildings that haven't been used since that time and to construct 22 new single-family residences. These are detached, single-family. The proposed density is about 11 units to the acre. This is similar to the Bluebird Lane project that's located at Los Gatos Boulevard and Caldwell. There are two BMP units required by our ordinance. The applicant's proposing to have one of them within the development. It would be a four-bedroom unit. And they're proposing to have a second one off-site. And right now, our BMP guidelines allow off-site units to be considered for projects of five to nine units. It doesn't speak to unit, to projects larger. They can't ask for that concession through the PD. And that is what the developer's requesting. And I think they'll articulate further why they feel that's an appropriate project, appropriate way to do it. But generally, we're getting a very large unit on-site, one that would be the largest in our BMP inventory. And we'd also get a low-income-for-sale unit if we went with the off-site option, of which we have none in our current inventory. We do have some low-income rental, but we have no low-income-for-sale units in the current BMP inventory. This is a green project. To get a, to get green certification under the Build It Green criteria that the Town Council adopted, you need 50 points. The applicant took that very seriously and they've proposed a project that will get 150 points. So they went, you know, three times above what they're required to get the project certified. There's several improvements that are being proposed here that are not required, but they're putting them into the project because they feel it will enhance the neighborhood and make a better presentation. One of those is to construct and fully landscape a new median in Los Gatos Boulevard. There are going to be two bull bouts at the rear corners, the corner of George and Roberts and the corner of George and Mitchell. And there'll be a smaller one at Los Gatos Boulevard and Mitchell. Those bull bouts will help with traffic calming and they will also allow more landscaping to be done on those prominent corners. There's also going to be a sidewalk on both sides of Mitchell Avenue, not just the project side, but they will pick up the sidewalk where it ends on the opposite side of Mitchell and run that down to the, to George Street along the project frontage. The applicant has prepared some photo simulations, which were attached to your report. There's also a visual simulation that's going to be presented following their presentation. I was going to do it in between, but it's actually at the end of their presentation on the computer, the way it's set up. So once the applicant does their presentation, they'll show you a visual simulation that'll show the project from various locations, just like you're driving by. The project design team is all present, so if you have technical questions about any of the engineering aspects, the architecture, traffic, and their attorneys here, I believe, all those experts are here to answer any questions. And that concludes the staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Commissioner Johnson, do you have a question?
I have a question to follow up. Ms. Davis, I just wanted to ask you for the benefit of the record and the Commission, I had asked you prior to the meeting what the status was of the CDC, CDAC proposal for 11 houses across the street at Shannon and Los Gatos Boulevard. Could you let us know what that is?
Yes, we did have a conceptual plan submitted for that site. It went to the CDAC on August 10th. At that point, they just received comments from the committee members and it was for 11 units on approximately an acre site. So no formal action was taken, no formal application has been submitted. At this time, I don't know with any certainty that the prospective developer will be submitting an application. So it's, at this point, no formal application. It could come in, it could, it may not. We don't know with any certainty right now.
But Ms. Davis, I do want to clarify that that application is separate from this.
Correct.
In fact, it's a separate applicant.
It's a separate applicant, not in any way connected to this application.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Well, fully understanding that it's a separate application, my follow-up is, what is the status of the revision of the Los Gatos Boulevard plan, which the Planning Commission has been asking for for some time, given that it, at least this Commissioner thinks it's irresponsible to consider projects of this size in a vacuum? Because now we have housing at Swanson Ford, we have housing at Caldwell and Los Gatos Boulevard, we have proposed houses, potentially proposed housing across the street. So especially with an intersection like that, if we don't have any guidance about how we're going to look at this as a whole, it seems not very responsible planning to consider a project in a vacuum.
The intent is to update the Los Gatos Boulevard plan in conjunction with the development of the North Forty specific plan. We have been working with RRM Design Group to develop a proposal for updating that plan, but it's still in draft form and so it has not gone to council for approval. So we are still a ways out from actually having an update to the Los Gatos Boulevard plan.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to be sure that I understand what we're doing. The rezoning would be from CH to CHPD. And I guess the question is, therefore, does that mean that the conversion from CH to CHPD would indicate that under either designation, residences could be built? But I understand that that may not be correct. In fact, I may have misunderstood Ms. Prop and I would kind of direct the question to Is a use permit at all required here or is it simply a zone change from CH to CHPD?
The particular, the PD addition to the C, the CHPD means we're putting a PD overlay on the, on the existing zoning. All of our commercial zones, including the CH zone, allow residential with a use permit. In this case, the PD would be the de facto use permit.
So the findings, what I'm wondering is normally when you adopt a use permit, you make specific findings. And I take it for us to simply go from CH to CHPD, we'd have to make the same kind of findings we would make for any use permit? That's the question.
No, we don't make use permit findings. You make a finding that the planned, proposed plan development is consistent with the general plan because it's a rezoning application.
Okay, that's why I'm confused. If we were to adopt a, just a simple use permit, as we many times have, we have requirements on what the findings must be. So you're saying, and this is where I'm confused, implicitly or explicitly but included is a use permit by making the change from CH to CHPD, but you don't make the use permit findings? Did I get that correct?
Yes, that's correct. You do not make conditional use permit findings. The zoning ordinance allows uses to be depicted in the plan development zones. If it's a permitted use through the plan development zone, you do not need to do a conditional use permit. It's an automatic permitted use. And there are no required findings in the zoning ordinance for rezonings in regards to the uses.
Well, what I'm wondering is the scope of our abilities this evening. Normally, if somebody told me they had zoning and they could build a housing and the town wanted them to do a PD, as we often do, that's one set of facts. If, on the other hand, implicit in the change is essentially a use permit, notwithstanding the lack of findings, then the ability to say no, it sounds to me, is greatly increased. And if that question is not clear, I'll be glad to amplify it. But I see this as different than simply saying, we're not changing the zoning, CH, changing the zoning in the sense that it's CHPD. But if somehow balled up in that is this concept of use permit, it would seem that your discretion on approval of the project is broader than otherwise would be. So I could use some help on that.
If I understand your question, you have the same, as you described it, broad discretion, whether you were approving a use permit or trying to make the findings of a PD. But this is a rezoning and we called that to your attention to clarify that even as the prior zoning, CH, its housing's not, or residential use is not a use by right, but would have required some sort of additional findings, just like tonight, the CHPD will require the findings set forth in the PD and the Commission has discretion in its recommendation to the Town Council.
So if, for example, one were to deny the request to change from CH to CHPD and the application were to proceed, not tonight, but proceed, as under CH, there we would make an explicit use permit for that? If it were to proceed?
If they were proceeding to do a housing development without a PD, then yes, they would need a conditional use permit, but it wouldn't be this type of plan because through the PD, it opens it up for a more creative approach for the development. It would have to be a standard housing development. It would be a whole different project if it came that way.
Thank you.
I follow up on that because now I think I'm thoroughly confused. The CH zone is basically, is, I have it written down, quote, "intended for development of vehicular-oriented activities and sales along high-rise frontages intermingled with compatible retail service and administrative activities." And I list a bunch of examples. Obviously, residential isn't one of them. So if the Town Council has said, because this was an auto dealership, you must develop it as a PD, you must have an application as a PD, but the PD suddenly substitutes for any findings that we've been allowing to make to allow housing in a zone that doesn't normally allow for it, then I don't get it. Because we're just being presented with residents and being told, okay, residents, without saying if that's good, bad, or indifferent. So do we incorporate that kind of thinking or discretion into deciding whether we're going to do anything at all with the PD? It seems like putting the cart before the horse because maybe we decide, I have no idea, I'm, I'm just asking this question. If, for example, the Planning Commission were to say, no, we don't think houses are a good thing there, we want to maintain the commercial, but we're spending a whole bunch of energy deciding on houses without actually making the findings required to determine if that's what ought to be there or not. So I'm very confused about that.
Well, I'm not sure the findings for a conditional use permit would really justify whether or not you feel housing is appropriate for that site. There's several goals and policies in the general plan that you could extrapolate that are very similar to findings that you make for conditional use permits. So I think you could find sections in the general plan that meet your intent for determining if a use is appropriate for this site.
I'm amazed. Quick question. So why, why don't we just rezone it to residential and subdivide it like a normal subdivision act? Why go through a PD?
Because it's required for auto, auto dealerships are now required to go through a plan development process. It's a requirement.
Okay. And that requirement was put in place because the town at the time was concerned with loss of revenue based on auto dealerships leaving?
That is correct.
Okay.
And you also have more control over a plan development. You can put more, we call them performance standards, but they're like conditions. You have more control of how it's developed.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell, did you have your hand raised before?
I'll do first.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Bushwell?
Just to follow up on that, I noticed that, you know, the rezoning we're asked to do right now is from CH to CHPD, but the environmental documentation had a different rezoning. It was CH to RM 512 PD. And I'm wondering if that makes a difference and why that happened?
We thought, I thought we corrected that. When I looked at the draft environmental, we, I had made that distinction that it was supposed to be CH to CHPD. So if that's still in there, that's, that's inaccurate.
Okay, yeah, it's on the first page of the mitigated neg deck. And I was just curious as to why that occurred and if rezoning that to a residential zone/pD would help with some of these issues.
You could, you could rezone it to RM 512. That is the prevailing zoning on two sides of the project.
And that zone is referred to in the staff report for comparison purposes. So I was just curious why.
But we, it was, it was just simpler to do the CH to CHPD. You could make the statement too, that if you do, if you went with a multifamily residential designation like an RM 512, that then you're inconsistent with the general plan land use designation, which is, it's got a mixed use designation on it right now.
Could we just follow for a second on the question that was asked? And that is, when looking at the uses permissible under a CH zone versus the uses permissible under a CHPD zone, where does residential come in? Where do you see it in the ordinance?
There's a conditional use permit table and it lists all the uses and then it has a, it has a mark for which zones are possible in, if, as a discretionary action.
So that use for the conditional use permit would apply to a CH zone, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Or is it just apply to a CHPD?
No, residential could be proposed in a C1 zone, a CH zone. There's a multiple number, it can be proposed in a CM.
So the reason I'm asking the question is if you look at the CH, you're not going to see it, but I take it if you look at the use permit section and determine what the use permit could apply to, you would see that the use permit would include residential when applied to a CH zone?
Yes, every, all of our zoning districts refer to that conditional use table. And then in one table, we have all of the different types of land uses listed and then it shows which zones are possible in with a use permit.
Commissioner Johnson?
One more thing. So if I understand it correctly, the only, well, not the only reason, but the ostensible reason that we're considering this as PD, because the Town Council directed that because it's an auto dealership, it has to come in as a PD, correct?
And the general plan also encourages larger-scale projects to be a PD as well.
Well, so my question is, if the Town Council is saying that it has to come in as a PD, are we still following the code 29.80.080 for plan development that indicates that it's intended to provide for alternative uses and developments more consistent with site characteristics than are allowed in other zones and, and so create an optimum quantity and use of open space and encourage good design? Is the applicant still bound by that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I wanted to follow up on something that you had mentioned. When I had asked, why not just rezone to residential to CH 512, there was a comment that it would be to RM, that it would be inconsistent with, and I didn't hear the last part.
General plan land use designation says mixed use, commercial.
Okay, so here's my question.
I thought the RM zoning was, the RM zoning usually companions with a medium-density residential designation on the land use plan.
So if it's inconsistent for it to be designated as residential, yet we have residential, aren't we, in general, not being consistent with what we are, we have laid out in our policies?
You can have a residential use in a mixed-use, commercial zone. And again, the CH zoning allows the residential, so we didn't see a need to rezone it to a different zoning designation that could be inconsistent.
To follow up with Ms. Davis, I mean, it's allowed in a CH zone with, you know, different additional approvals, but it is permitted. So it's not inconsistent with the general plan. If you changed it to RM, it would be strictly residential only. So there would be no opportunity, not saying that there would be, but they would then know more in the future. Like if you wanted to not approve this project tonight, then it would not allow to go back to commercial.
Right, I understand that. But by approving what is before us tonight as 22 homes, it's strictly residential?
Correct, but it's permitted in the CH zone. It's a permitted use.
Okay, I, okay. Commissioner Johnson?
I'm sorry to beat a dead horse, but if you rezone it as RM 512, yes, you prevent future resident, commercial, or mixed use. But if you build 22 houses on it, you prevent that as well. If you bring it in as a RM 512, it's probably not going to fit 22 houses. So is the only reason you're not considering that is because it, as an auto dealership, it has to come in as a PD?
The proposed density still fits within the RM 512. It's 11 units per acre. That 512 means 512 units per acre. So the density's still within the RM 512 range. It's not a density issue. It, it's simply that the zoning, that zoning designation for multifamily, they could still ask for a PD with an RM 512 zoning and still do the same potential development.
Right, but if the rationale for not doing, or changing it to residential is because there's no potential for anything other than residential? If we approve the proposed project tonight or recommend it for approval, we're preventing something besides residential anyway? That's, that's my point.
It's your option. If you feel that there should be a general plan amendment, you could forward it to council and state that you feel it should be changed to RM 512 PD and require a general plan amendment. That's your option if you feel strongly about that.
Commissioner Erickson, did you have your hand up?
I guess while I find all this discussion that started on this, I find intellectually Unless I misunderstand, the council has provided very specific direction by its actions to only allow development of former car dealerships by the use of a plan development. So unless the council, unless the Planning Commission wants to not follow the, what I understand to be very specific direction from the Town Council, who were accountable to, it seems like to me, it's really a moot question because the applicant only had one avenue with which to apply for the development of this property, which was a plan development.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
There are substantive reasons for this discussion, notwithstanding that it sounds non-substantive. And I don't, I will not pursue this except to say that I would like to ask one more question. That is, if it were rezoned and the general plan amended, so that it was RM 512 or whatever, a subdivision map would have to be filed?
They'll do a subdivision map regardless.
But a subdivision map under a PD is different than a subdivision map under a non-PD, is it not?
No, it's not. The lot sizes are just different. That's the only thing.
Well, isn't the PD ordinance, doesn't it supersede some of the requirements we've set in our code for non-PDs?
Not in terms of a subdivision map. They still would have to final, file a tentative map. It goes through the same process. It's no different.
But streets, for example, this has a street without a sidewalk?
The, you're right. This private street is 20 feet wide and the lot sizes are smaller than a traditional subdivision would be.
Therefore, the density might in fact be, notwithstanding what the code provides, you can only get so much on the lot if you have to comply with general subdivision requirements. Footage of the streets, sidewalks, all that kind of thing, right?
Yeah, if we wanted a public street, for example, it would have to be considerably larger.
So that's the substance of the question, notwithstanding the wisdom of our council.
So I am now going to open the public testimony portion of the meeting, as we did with the last. The applicant will have five minutes cumulative. Afterwards, everyone who would like to speak on the item will have three minutes. And then the applicant will have three minutes afterwards to respond to issues that have been raised or just any closing comments that he would like to make. So Mr. Robson, are you presenting tonight?
For the record, my name is Mark Robson. I represent Robson Homes. Thank you for allowing us to present our project. The proposed project that we have on the screen does a lot of great things relative to achieving the goals of the Boulevard Plan, both in terms of architecture, public improvements, and landscaping. But more importantly, what it does is it's going to remove an incompatible use. And I'd like to show you what's out there now. Next slide. This is looking north on Los Gatos Boulevard. Next slide. This is a little closer to the intersection of Roberts. Next slide. This is looking west on Roberts Road. This is looking east from George, just to give you some idea of what it looks like. And this is going to be replaced with what I showed you earlier. and this is going to be replaced with what I showed you earlier. Not only is that a lot more compatible, you're going to have front door to front door, we've got deep front porches, but it's going to enhance the character of the neighborhood, and it's also going to restore the historic pattern on Mitchell, which I think is, is important. The next slide is the aerial. In this area, the Boulevard, the character of the Boulevard changes, the lanes go from four lanes to two, and residential uses are introduced along the Boulevard here. In the neighborhood, you've got a mix of residential uses, you've got apartments, and you've got condominiums and townhouses, you've got a medium-density use here, and you've got single-family use here. What's most striking about this is though, is of this site, is the proximity to city services and the walkability of this site. That coupled with the location on the Boulevard make it an excellent residential and high residential, high-density residential site. Consequently, in our first submittal to the CDAC Committee, we came in with 44 homes and a commercial use. Although the plan was consistent with the town housing element, the CDAC Committee felt that the density was too high and asked us to revise our plan. We revised our plan, and we came in and presented a new plan in March of 2010 for 24 homes, and I want to mention that we're, as you know, we're at 22. In that plan, CDAC gave us very, very specific recommendations, and the plan before you tonight reflects the recommendations that we received from the CDAC Committee at that meeting, and also reflects the requirements and the goals and the policies of the Boulevard Plan. Specifically, the CDAC Committee said that commercial was not required and it may not be appropriate on this site. They also asked us to look at what we were doing on the Boulevard relative to fencing, relative to architecture and landscaping, which we've addressed. They also raised concerns about pedestrian activity relative to access to the schools, and asked us to consider that in our plan. They also asked us to put together a, a set of exhibits that included a photo simulation that we're going to show you tonight. Most importantly, though, they said that the density was appropriate for the site, and that in all residential scenario was the, was the right direction to go. Given the, given that, we put together a significant set of public improvements to underscore the residential character of this neighborhood. As staff pointed out, and I'm sort of turning, there's a large median that's going to be installed, that's going to be constructed, implanted with giant redwoods, there's ample landscaping along here, it'll be accented with a stone wall, and a parkway that'll wrap around the entire site that I think will add not only a lot of character and ambiance, but also improves the safety, as mentioned in the staff report. Along with that safety addition in terms of the pedestrian activity, we're going to be adding bull bouts, which are traffic calming and improve pedestrian access to the schools. All in all, this is going to make the street experience, not only along the Boulevard, but around the entire site, a lot more street and pedestrian friendly. I'd like to show you what it's going to look before and after, we have some stills, this is looking south on the Boulevard, this is where it is today, this is what it'll look like with the proposed plan, and you can see that the, the view, the hillside of the hills is protected, and that was one of the things that they asked us to, to look at. Next slide, next slide. The architecture is consistent with the character and projects a feel of the town, we have 18 different elevations, which the Boulevard Plan asked you to do. Next slide, this is looking west on Roberts, and this is what the proposed use would be. And the scale of these homes is really different than anything that's been approved, anything that we've been built. This home here that you see on this slide is 20 feet 6 inches, normally you're seeing homes that are 28 feet tall. That concludes my presentation, we do have the photo sim, if you'd like to see it, I'd love to show it to you and answer questions.
Actually, I would like to see the photo simulation.
All right, go ahead. Southbound on Los Gatos Boulevard, before, this is after. We're going to turn down Roberts. As staff said, we've, our technical consultants are here, as others, and we're prepared to answer questions.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I was walking through your Bluebird project today, and I, I think the work you do is, is first-rate, so I want to set that up straight. But I was, since you did Bluebird, and since you want to do this one, I was trying to get some sense of feel for that. And I did notice that on Bluebird, on the private street, you have a sidewalk, and as I understand it, you are not proposing a sidewalk in the new development. Secondly, I did notice that some of the garages essentially are two-story garages, which I guess permit rooms or something, people could, kids or somebody could live there. And I think you're also proposing those two-story garages in this development. I'd kind of like to get your thoughts on, I know the architect made some, our architect made some comments about traffic calming for the private street and the lack of a sidewalk. Other than the fact that you'd need more room for a sidewalk, is there any particular reason why there's not a sidewalk on the private street?
Well, we didn't think it was, it was necessary, and there's no other reason than that. What we did in lieu of that was to, and this was a recommendation from the town architect, Larry Cannon, was that the entire private street is going to be either modular paving or textured paving, so that the, the feel and the character is a, is a, first a private street, but it's going to, it's going to feel different than a public street, and that in itself will help calm traffic and will work to make the, the experience on that street really frankly, a first-rate experience.
Has there been a problem with the sidewalk on Bluebird? Now you want to not have it?
I'm not, as I recall, I know the sidewalk at Bluebird is at the entrance, but I don't know that it extends all the way to the back, I think it just is at the, at the very front of the project and does not extend to the, all the way to the back.
I walked that street today, and maybe I'm missing something, but I never left the sidewalk, and I went all the way to the end of the project. So, I think it does, but you can check, your people are here, maybe I'm wrong, but that's kind of important to me, so if you check it later, you can get back. And secondly, I remember when, if you want to take a moment, go ahead and look.
It, it is planned to continue, and so there is a sidewalk there, but here, we've, we've decided to put the modular paving in.
I assume that's a space thing, as I understand what you've said in our file, that you have a setback on this project, which is, in your judgment, more than normal, and that was one of the reasons you didn't have a sidewalk?
Not necessarily, you're talking about the, I think you're talking about the setback along Los Gatos Boulevard.
Right, that's what your letter said, so that's what I'm relying on.
Well, we, we dedicated a lot of space to the, to the area along the Boulevard, but, you know, frankly, if we needed to, you know, to add a sidewalk inside, I think that we can do that, but I don't think it's necessary. I think by putting the modular paving there in the street that we have reduces the amount of impervious surface, and I think is, it's a better solution, but if we needed to accommodate a sidewalk on one side, we can do that.
I'm not suggesting anything at the moment, we're listening, I just want to kind of know why.
Okay.
And then the second issue was, I remember when Bluebird came before us, one of the issues, one was, the second story on the garages, and there was, we debated that back and forth, as I recall, and I don't know how many you have out of those total units, but you have some, and one of your, one of your drawings here that you showed us on the moving exhibit showed, again, a two-story garage. What is the square footage of your biggest unit, including the square footage of the garage? I don't mean the garage, I mean the space above the garage.
Well, the way they're designed currently, they are the same, for example, the garages here are the same height as they are at Bluebird Lane, which is 21 feet high. Our intent is that these garages will be much shorter, and small, and the space upstairs will be much smaller because of that. At Bluebird Lane, there's a kitchenette and a, a full bathroom. Our intent here is really just to provide a place for storage, and just really a room and maybe a powder bath, and that's it. Our intent is for these to be quite a bit smaller, and I'll have to double-check on what the, the footage is, but see, as you lower the roof, the, you know, the, the amount of space, when the ridgeline comes down, is reduced, and so whatever the size I'm going to give you here in a few minutes, it will wind up being smaller.
Before you do that, it is however designed so someone can occupy it.
Someone can go in there, and they can use it, but not, but I don't, it's not being designed so you would actually live in it.
Okay, so your teenage son, for example, couldn't be stuck out in the house?
No, that's, no, it's, no, at Bluebird, it's designed for that, but here, it's not designed for that. It really is designed, it's just a, an extra space that you could use as a, first as a storage room, or as some other, you know, flexible space, but it's not meant to be a habitable space relative to spending nights there, that is not the intent of that, you know, of that space, and that's why we're going to shrink the roofs of that, and I, I think as the project moves forward and through A&amp;S, the, the height of that building will come, of those buildings will come down, and the space will get smaller, I'll find out what the size of that is here in a second for you. At Bluebird, it was 480 square feet, and right now, it's 330 here, so it's already smaller, but the intent is to, is to shrink it down because it's taller than we'd like it to be.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Johnson, and then Commissioner Erickson?
I have quite a number of questions, maybe I, may I be allowed to ask them? Or do I have to go one at a time and then raise my hand again? Which I'm happy to do, I just want to know.
Would you like someone else to go first, and then we can see what's else?
No, not necessarily, not necessarily.
Okay, so let's go one at a time.
One question, one question at a time? Okay. So my first, well, there's just so many. As I read earlier, the intent of a plan development is to create a possibility for alternative uses that are more consistent with the site characteristics. Here you have a dead-flat site, and, and so create an optimum quantity and use of open space. So, I'm looking at your sheet C4, and I would very much like you to refer to that, and tell me where the public optimum quantity of open space is.
I'm going to give you a long answer.
I'd prefer a short one.
Me, me too. But it's a tough, when we presented the plan to CDAC the second time, March of 2010, we had an open space element, and one of the comments from the CDAC Committee was, is that an open space element would not be, would not be a good idea there because of loitering from kids, and so what they asked us to do was to put the space in yards, and that's what we've done.
Okay.
And so on C, to answer your question on C4, it's, it's in the yards.
Right, which is not a public open space, obviously. Let me follow up with the kids.
Correct.
Your lot is located essentially between and among three schools, a preschool behind it, an elementary school to the south, and a junior high, what is that direction, anyway, Fisher. So, the way that you get to Fisher is down Roberts or down Mitchell. You get to Van Meter down Los Gatos Boulevard, and you get to the preschool down Roberts or down Mitchell, or you come back the other way, I guess, from Blossom Hill. So, you have parents trying to drop people off, you have kids walking to school, and you get a horrific backup in that area, certain times of the day when school is letting off and letting in, and you have kids walking and riding bikes. You're proposing a 20-foot street with no sidewalks that cuts through the two access roads, so if I didn't feel like waiting in line at Mitchell, I would cut through your development and go to Roberts, and I might, you know, on that 20-foot street, there's nothing to prevent it. So, if we're talking about pedestrian safety or kids' safety, how can you argue to us that a 20-foot street makes any sense there without a sidewalk?
I would argue that the wider the street is, the faster people will drive, and I would argue that it's going to be restricted to a right turn in and right turn out, and it's going to be very difficult in morning hour traffic to make a, to cut, to get across, to get across from here where the driveway is to the left-hand turn lane, because that's why people are going up Roberts, is to make a left to head north on Los Gatos Boulevard. Everybody that is going south is on Mitchell, and so that, that would be my answer. And I think that the, I think that the paving that we're doing, I think it works relative to pedestrian access.
Okay, two more short ones for now. The Los Gatos Boulevard Plan, you argued, or you presented in your presentation that your, your project was consistent with the residential area. That area, if you look at your simulation, which was interesting because it had one car on it, on Los Gatos Boulevard, has a skate shop and an auto retailing place across the street, clearly that's not residential. You go down and there's condominiums, you go down and there's a school. The Los Gatos Boulevard Plan indicates that land uses will be implemented in such a way as to keep the transition from the higher-density mixed-use in the north to a mixture of residential and commercial clusters, and then to existing residential in the south. It also indicates that uses south of Shannon Road shall be residential or office, existing non-residential uses shall not be intensified, and existing vacant property and residential uses shall be developed as a single-family residence. This isn't vacant property, nor is it existing residential, it's also not south of Shannon. So, how is it consistent with residential neighborhood that doesn't exist apart from your proposed development?
I'm going to ask you to go to page 14 of the, of the, I think it's page 14 of the Los Gatos Boulevard Plan. I think it says there that vacant sites should go to residential, that's number one, is that vacant sites should go to residential, and maybe it's not on page 14, but it also says, and I would argue that this site is consistent with being south of Shannon Road. I wouldn't concede that it's not, I think that in all residential solution is consistent here, and it was also, that, that was the direction, it was given to us by CDAC.
It says Roberts Road.
And it actually says Roberts Road in the, in the general plan, it should be all residential in the general plan.
Okay, we're looking for our references, so I'll, I'll stop for now, thanks.
Commissioner Erickson?
Thanks for bringing another interesting and well, well-developed proposal forward to us. I have several questions, a couple of which I'll ask now, and a couple which we'll ask after the public. So, the density that you're proposing in this particular location is greater than the density in the Bluebird Lane development down the street, is greater than the density west of George Street, is greater than the density immediately south on Mitchell, not that it's right or wrong, can you help in this particular location, which, which I believe is appropriately residential and is consistent with the, with the Boulevard Plan, I would agree with your logic? Why did you choose this particular density? Can you help us understand your logic for choosing this density as opposed to another density as you did at the Bluebird Lane, or that are adjacent to the property?
Sure. I'd like to actually ask you to turn around and look at the site plan behind you. This area along Los Gatos Boulevard, those homes are smaller and more dense, and it makes sense because it's on the Boulevard. The area along Mitchell, the one place where we back up to single-family homes, there's four buildings across the street, we've got four buildings along here, and that's in fact, the historic pattern there. Along here, these are bigger houses and a lower density, and along here, we- And along here, we, you know, next to Roberts, and there's a school over here, as you know, along Roberts, it's a commercial use, and we, you know, the building sort of sighed onto that, and that's how we handled the density. The area above is five to 12, and we're at 11, so I think we're consistent with that.
You also chose, thank you very much, that's, you also chose to do, to propose to do one BMP unit onsite and one off. Can you, I want to give you an opportunity to help us, to help us understand your rationale for doing that and the advantage to doing that as opposed to having both of the BMP units onsite.
Well, we looked at the town's inventory, and as the staff mentioned, we're able to provide a couple of units that just are not in your inventory. One, the BMP that we're putting on site is not our smallest unit on site. It's exactly the same as the other homes in the project, which is unusual. And this will be your only four-bedroom home, and it'll be your largest four-bedroom home in your inventory, which I think is a huge advantage. With respect to the off-site unit, as staff pointed out, this will be the only low-income for-sale home. Another advantage of that is that we can bring that on much sooner than we otherwise could, and a home buyer could take advantage of the current interest rates. And I think that that is a real big advantage to that, you know, to the housing policy, because at the end of the day, you're providing housing opportunities that aren't currently being offered in your inventory, and I think that's a really good thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Bushwell?
Maybe I missed in the staff report. Have you indicated where the off-site BMP is going to be? Or is this something you haven't purchased yet or don't know yet?
It's not in your neighborhood.
No, I don't.
No, we haven't.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'd like to respond to one of their comment regarding open space. You know, the space that is shown along Los Gatos Boulevard, I'd like to go back, well, the section, all that space, although there'll be a, you know, a small fence there to provide some, and we left that in there primarily so that kids wouldn't necessarily be attracted to go in there, but it's an iron fence, so you'll be able to see through. We'll put a hedge, you know, a hedge along there. But that's a lot of open space that is going to be available for the public view shed and as part of the streetscape. And so there is quite a bit of open space, because that's going to be maintained by the homeowners association, and people's yards aren't going to go into that space. That's going to be a space that is part of the common area and will be maintained by the homeowners association, which has some other benefits from a long-term aesthetic standpoint. That's it.
Commissioner Smith, did you have a question?
I actually have a question and more of a comment and just some reality. With the lack of the sidewalk, it concerns me deeply, and I want to tell you that I have experience of walking children to school and cutting through housing projects, because my grandsons do it. And without a sidewalk, I do think you're going to get people who will choose not to be on the Boulevard, but will cut through the project. And I'm not talking about driving, I'm actually talking about being on skateboards and bikes, et cetera. And then you're going to have people backing out of driveways. I just think that if there's any way to put that sidewalk in, that is one part of the plan that concerns me almost more than anything else, is that one private street narrow, no sidewalk.
Well, we can accommodate a sidewalk if, as we go along, that's something that we can do.
Okay. Mr. Robson, I actually was on CDAC when you came before us both times, and I actually was in favor of retaining some commercial along the Los Gatos Boulevard frontage. Clearly, I was in the minority, and clearly, I'm trumped, as the other two members are council members, so I understand why you removed that component. Besides the direction that you did receive from them, are there other factors that led to your decision to remove any commercial along Los Gatos Boulevard?
Well, there's a lot of for lease signs on the Boulevard, and you've got 70,000 square feet that have been approved on the Boulevard now, including quite a bit of office and retail. So I think there's plenty of space out there, and I think that for the people that own buildings, I think they'd rather get some occupants in the buildings they have, including, you know, the building right above us, which used to be pink, it's now tan, has been vacant for five years. And Panera Bakery is, you know, further up the Boulevard, it has taken a long time before that shopping center went in. And then I think the building across the street's vacant, so there is quite a bit of vacancy out there. And, you know, I think that that had a lot to do with it. We have toyed with the idea of doing live-work units. And I'm going to, again, point you to the, to that site plan behind you, on this corner and this corner, to provide some flexibility if someone ever wanted to do that. That has an idea that's sort of circulated in our heads. I don't know that we have a whole lot of, a whole lot of it figured out, but that is an idea that is sort of bouncing around our heads right now.
Okay. One of the reasons why I did like the commercial aspect was it continued the commercial along Los Gatos Boulevard, but one area that I was concerned about when you're moving to residential, that lot, 21, 22?
Yeah.
Basically, that's a weird site for a house, because if you're coming down, I think it's west on Shannon, and you're at that stoplight, those headlights at night are shining right into the house, so.
Well, yeah, all those houses along there are going to have that challenge relative to Shannon Road. And that's why I think in that section, there's pictures of large redwood trees and box trees in boxes there, that they won't only be planted in the median, but some of those will be planted in that landscape area in front of those homes to help, you know, to help diffuse some of that light that comes in there. With respect to Lot 22 specifically, we have a really large setback from the street, and in fact, you know, even in the process of putting up our story poles, we increased it further and have continued to refine that. And, you know, for the same sentiments that you've expressed, you know, that's why we've asked ourselves, you know, what is the right use on that corner? Maybe a, maybe a live-work unit does make some sense there because of the proximity to the corner, and maybe a, somebody that has a small office could use it in that way, and so that's where we're at on that. But we are, we provided a very large setback so that there will be plenty of landscaping. And when you look at the floor plans of all those houses along there, and we spent quite a bit of time on that, I'm going to sort of digress for a second while I have your attention on that, is all these homes in here, we spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out how to create a great living environment in there. And, you know, the master bedrooms are on the backside, which I think is important. And the, on these homes here, the kitchen and the dining area is out front, but the living area is in the middle of the house and looks at a courtyard in between the homes, because no one's going to want to, there are not a lot of people that are going to want to sit, notwithstanding a retail situation on the busy corner, are going to want to sit on a street. And so by putting them in a courtyard, I think we can create the best possible environment possible for the people that live there. And so a lot of thought went into the living environment along that edge.
And one other comment, a lot of comments that we had that during both meetings was just where you're situated, you get a lot of pedestrian and bicycle traffic from students. And so I see the pedestrian access, and you have a bike lane on Los Gatos Boulevard, but can you talk about how you plan to handle traffic on Mitchell as well as Roberts, particularly as people are coming down Shannon during school hours, trying to cross over? That's pretty much nonstop traffic, and how are you going to get people, how's your secondary access going to work during school hours? Are people supposed to enter through Mitchell? Are they, can you just walk me through the flow of how you envision this?
Yes, relative to, it's, well, you've asked, I think, a few questions or intimated you've got a few questions, relative to this intersection, people, as I said, are going to be, are using, typically use Roberts in the morning to go northbound, and it's a right turn in, right turn out. Off Mitchell, it's either, you can go make a right and a left there. And the video didn't show it, but there is a pork shop there in the middle of that, of that intersection at Roberts to force people to go, to go right. And I think that that's, you know, important to point out. But also, relative to your question about, I think you were headed toward, you were talking about pedestrian traffic, in the morning, most of the pedestrian traffic is along Roberts. There's not a lot of pedestrian traffic along Mitchell, because Mitchell doesn't really, nothing feeds into Mitchell. Most of the people are walking down Nino and cutting over. There's not a tremendous amount of foot traffic along Mitchell, I mean, as compared to Roberts Road, that's where most of it, most of it is. But there is going to be a bulb out here and a bulb out here, which calms traffic, and it puts, it provides better visibility for pedestrians, for, you know, someone making a right turn to make a turn out to Los Gatos Boulevard. I mean, there are some of the other advantages to the way we've set this up, not just, not just at school hour, but thinking about, you know, someone returning from this side of town, instead of having to come through here and pass all these houses to go into the project, they're going to be able to come through here and right into here. So it will, it disperses, because of the way it's set up, it disperses traffic in a much better way, so that people aren't as impacted by the traffic, and that's one of the reasons why I like the way it's set up. But I do think, you know, I think people living here in morning rush hour, they're going to miss that. I mean, I lived in this neighborhood for six years next to the school. And of all the years I lived there, I came out at school time a handful of times. I mean, you just get in the habit of avoiding it, and, I mean, it's just what you do, and because it's a relatively short-term phenomenon, you work around it. And if you, if you do come out and you want to go north, I think that it's crowded, you'll go back around this way and come out. And that's, because that's what I, that's what I'm doing now when I visit the site in the morning to see what's happening with traffic.
I understand your point, but I would also argue that if you have school-aged children, you have no point to, you have no opportunity to avoid it. Everyone goes to school at a certain time, everyone leaves at a certain time, and so it's great if, in 22 homes, you may have more flexibility in what kinds of families are there, but if you're, if you're thinking of entry-level housing with families, then you're thinking those are a lot of kids that are all leaving and entering at the same time.
I would argue that anybody who lives at this site is going to walk to school, and people are not going to drive to school from this location, they're just not. I think it helps traffic.
Commissioner Johnson?
So I actually have two questions with respect to that. If people that are in your housing development are going to work, they're clearly not going to walk there, so the cars that are in your development are adding to the traffic problem that's already there, number one. And number two, my experience with Mitchell is people walk down there to get to Fisher. Number three, my real question is, I have personal experience with the construction of Bluebird, and there are giant, among other things, lumber trucks that come down with giant lumber. How are you going to handle the trucks and the construction traffic and the closure of lanes and everything else that goes with the construction of 22 houses, given the traffic conditions on that site?
Appreciate the question. I'm pretty proud of how we've handled traffic at Bluebird Lane and on Codwell during construction. We built the sidewalk during non-school, during the non-school period, and we'll do that here. Staff has some recommendations relative to deliveries, and I think we've, I think we've proven at Bluebird that we can do a good job of it. There's a speaker here tonight from the neighborhood that's going to address what it's like to have lived directly across the street and dealt with those lumber trucks. I think we've done a really good job of it, we've built an extra parking lot, we've done all kinds of things, and I think that we're going to make the best of this situation. I'm not going to tell you that you're not going to have to break some eggs to make an omelet, because you will. I'm not going to say that there's not going to be some inconvenience, because there will. But I think at the end of the day, I think that this is going to be a terrific project, and I think that we'll manage those conditions very, very well, like we have in the past.
I just have to say that with all due respect to who's ever going to talk about the Bluebird Lane construction project, they don't live on the corner where the trucks back up and try to beep in the corner that they can't fit at. So just a little point of disagreement.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Robson. I'm going to open it up to the public, and again, if you are planning on speaking, if you could state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes. The first speaker is Shannon Suzik.
Hi, I'm Shannon Suzik, and I live at 162407 Shady View Lane. I am a residential real estate appraiser, I'm a mother of two teenagers, I'm a fifth-generation Californian, and my grandmother lived in Los Gatos, my great aunt lived in Montessorino. I've been coming here for, oh my God, 50 years, I'm over 50 now. But in any case, I was driving down the street the other day, and I looked and I saw 22 proposed homes, and I went, oh my God, that's a lot of houses in that location. And I have to say that as an appraiser, I mean, I love the buildings that you do, and the developments, I think, are fabulous, very high quality for the number of houses that go in. And I've been in the ones in Santa Clara as well. And this looks, looks great, and the whole simulation was good, and I had a totally different speech plan, but what I wanted to talk about was things that you brought up here. And some of it is in regards to zoning and changing zoning and not having a general plan that is confirmed for Los Gatos Boulevard. Am I correct? Has that been approved for Los Gatos Boulevard, the plan? You have a general plan, but you don't have one for the Boulevard since all these dealerships and the businesses have gone. So I think that it's important to, it's great to have someone that wants to come in and immediately provide some stimulus in the area, but I think you have to look at the big picture, and I think that it's a good idea to have a plan approved and then go from there. And as far as density, I mean, we really could do something different with the streets. You could have one street come in halfway on either side, you could put a park in the middle there. Where are the kids going to play? Where are the dogs going to go? They're going to go to Fisher, they're going to go to Van Meter, which is already impacted. So you could do that to avoid that cut through with that street, because people will do that. Just some other ideas, I know they've already gone back to the drawing board before, but not many houses, that many kids, totally impacts the schools. And it may only be one or two now, but if you look at all the other developments that are planned, that is a big impact on the schools. And I don't know, we were going to have some teachers here, and they're probably too tired from working all day that they didn't come, but really, the schools are the biggest drawing for these communities that are being built. If you look at Bluebird Lane, it's, you can walk to all three schools, we have the high test scores, sorry. So in order to keep these developments going, we need to keep our schools at the level that they should be, and bringing in more students without additional revenue is one thing to consider. I know it's not really part of the planning at the school district, but anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, and Ms. Suzik had raised something that I wanted to just clearly state, since there have been several projects that have come before us that have, whether it was written or verbally, there have been lots of comments about the impact of development onto schools. And as I've stated on, with past projects, and I'm going to state again, just so that the record is there, state law severely limits, it basically ties our hands on what we can do with regards to development and its impact on schools. It's called State Bill 50, I urge all of you to read it, but I just want people to understand, you're free to comment on it, you're free to be frustrated, but there are severe limitations on what we consider when we make our decisions with regard to development. So I just want to put that out there, okay? And as the speaker mentioned, that's a, that's a school district issue, and that's certainly something that you can bring to your, you can talk about among your school representatives. Okay, the next speaker is Diane Campisi, am I saying? Dionne, I apologize. Dionne, I apologize.
Thank you, Los Gattis City Council. My name's Dionne Campisi, and I've lived on Roberts Road for over 10 years now. I drive by this site about four times a day, so I know the site well. Being in the real estate industry, I pay close attention to the different projects and developments that are going on in the area, and I feel this project needs to be supported by the local community and the city council. Based on the plans that I've seen, that Mark's done, this project would increase the value, I think, of all the surrounding homes and add new life and energy to the Los Gattis Boulevard. It would also be beneficial to our local community and schools by giving this area a more neighborhood-family-like setting. Personally, my home backs up to a commercial auto lot. To the right is a pool service company, and in the front of me is a music store. So I've got commercial surrounding me. I feel like our neighborhood has too much commercial property. This particular Los Gattis neighborhood is in dire need of some more custom residential housing, such as the future Ropeson Home Development. I think overall, this will be an upgrade to our neighborhood and local community, and that the Los Gattis City Council should unanimously support this project. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. The next speaker is Andre Woloski.
I didn't think I was going to hear this long. Hi, Madam Chair, Planning Commission. My name's Andre Woloski. I live at 16382 Roby Lane, which is just on the backside of Calvary Church. Couple of things here, the comments about schools. Impact of schools, that's a good problem. There's a lot of schools closing down because there's not enough kids there, so that's a good problem. But the project sets before you, the one thing that's inevitable in our life is change. And the critical thing that I look at is, what's the change going to be, and what kind of project is going to be put into that change? This Honda dealership, which I drive by about four times a day, is an eyesore. And, you know, the commercial uses that are talked about, I'm in commercial real estate 29 years, chairman and CEO of a company, and a commercial use is just not adaptable for that area. What Mr. Robson is planning here is, I think, something that's needed in the neighborhood. We do have quite a bit of retail. And the quality projects that he's done, if you really look at them, and I've walked through every one of the projects he's done, the Sona, Bluebird, and also the one right there on Roberts and Shannon, you're finding a developer who's building quality projects in your neighborhood, which is something we need. The pink building he talked about, I sold to the current owner, because it sat vacant for five years, and I sold it from the bank. So, to say the least, that was an eyesore. Thank god it's no longer pink, and they've softened it with some stone features and so forth. But, you know, one of the things that you and the Planning Commission and the council need to look at, building quality projects, not just building a project. And I think Robson does a very, very good job of building quality projects, and I hope he's supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Next speaker is Gary Metz.
My name is Gary Metz. I live at 16898 Mitchell Avenue, right across from the proposed development. And I'd like to speak in support of the residential project, highlighting four points. Simply, one, the development, in my opinion, will enhance the surrounding area over that of any commercial development. Number two, the development will address positively safety issues regarding car speed and reduction in traffic. And that's a personal plea. I have two little kids right across the street. Three, I believe it will enhance the local schools. I've heard about higher density. My wife is an educator, has been for years. By delivering more children in the area with familiar neighbors, slower traffic, and less non-resident traffic, I believe that will bring more care in driving and awareness of the children who walk, ride their bikes, scooter in the immediate area. And number four, and what's been communicated here, is that this project will beautify the area. I love Los Gattis. I think it's a beautiful place, great place for kids and families, and, you know, this will really keep in mind the nice quaint appearance that we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Next speaker is Michael Hamat. What is it?
My name is Mike Hammacher. I live at 16906 Mitchell Avenue, which is right in the corner of George and Mitchell. Been there for 24 years. So I've seen a lot of Honda dealership and the unsightly conditions, as well as a lot of traffic problems due to the commercial. I think what Mark's putting in is an excellent thing. I don't want to be redundant. There's a few other before me that said it was wonderful. I think the same thing. And I hope it goes through, and I hope you guys approve it.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I didn't pronounce your last name correctly. Any questions? Okay, Muffet Brown. I got that one.
My name is Muffet Brown, and I live at 16345 Los Gattis Boulevard. And perhaps the applicant can put the overhead view back up on the one that's like the bird's eye view of the whole, yeah, that, okay. Thanks. My, I like the project overall. I think the layout is very good, given that lot and its limitations. One thing I'm concerned about is parking. And I live in the townhouses that you can see on the left edge of the screen, and we are on approximately, just a little bit more than twice the acreage, and we have 52 units, and we have 29 interior spaces of parking. And every space is filled every night, and even though almost every townhouse has two garages, all but eight have two-car garages, large two-car garages, but only three of us, three of us units out of 52, house two cars in our two-car garage at night. So everybody else houses at least one car out in our interior spaces or out on the street. We have lots of exterior parallel parking around Nino, Los Gattis Boulevard, and Fisher Avenue, which, you know, are the boundaries of our approximately four acres. But, of course, there's no parking at all on Los Gattis Boulevard. And I'm concerned about the nine units in the Robson proposed development that have neither driveways that are long enough for their cars to park in front of their garage, or, and they're also bound in by Los Gattis Boulevard, so they don't have a lot of street-side parking really close to them. And the number of bedrooms is more per unit in these single-family homes than our townhouses. So, yes, let's see, we have, 20 of our 52 townhouses are inhabited by just one person. There's a lot of single people who bought, sometimes, some of them a long time ago and some recently. And then I have a whole bunch of statistics about our demographics. We have 22 Los Gattis public school attending children in our 52 units, in case you want to make a comparison, because the family size, if anything, in our units is going to be smaller probably than the average family size that buys in here. But overall, I think it's, it's good, and it's going to really increase our property value. One thing, I mean, if the town had extra money, which I know they don't have, I'd like to ask a question about this whole Roberts Road, Shannon Road intersection, because there's this huge opportunity here if we're going to actually put two sets of residential developments in.
Well, unfortunately, your time's up, and we don't have a lot of money. So I do ask you that, if you'd like, you can certainly talk to our staff offline and see what they have to say.
Because I would sure love to see some medians put in and roads lined up, and that would make a beautiful node right there.
Our next speaker, Leslie Politis.
Hi, good evening, Commissioner. I actually don't have a script tonight. I've spoken to you a few times and was going to recuse myself tonight, because Leslie, who lives seven-tenths of a mile from the development, will be one of the people driving my headlights into that every day. And I'm looking forward to seeing something other than that statue on the wall, and I do think the development is certainly tasteful. I did decide to pull a speaker card and share, however, that my, I was a little concerned about the comment that your hands are tied, and while I appreciate that they are, I just wanted to clarify that I think it's actually Senate Bill 50, if anybody wants to read it, not State Bill. It was put into place in 1998 to try to limit the unmitigated impact of development on schools. And most things coming out of Sacramento, like the money you don't have, aren't working the way that they're supposed to be. And so, it does tie your hands, but it doesn't really, we are not getting the developer fees we need to support the ongoing development in town. And this particular development is 22 units, it's tasteful. I, you know, again, was not, I wasn't going to speak. I think I share the feelings of another speaker tonight, that not doing this in a vacuum is really what we're looking forward to, is, I know there's a housing plan that says, "Let's put 1,600 houses up over 10 years," but really, pace yourself and help us figure out how the services in the town of Los Gattis are moving, at what pace to keep up with that. And I've shared with you before, we're out of bonding capacity, our schools are overcrowded, and we're just trying to figure out how to keep up with it. And we do appreciate that you can't do anything specific, and that we would have to work on mitigation agreements with developers individually to try to do something, and we've been seeing more and more support in that area. So we're looking forward to that. But please, whatever you can do to help, look at the global picture of residential development would be helpful, what you can do to help the schools. Thank you very much.
Actually, I have two questions of you. Thanks for that clarification. It is Senate Bill 50, and I still urge you to read it.
So if you Google it.
And certainly, if you, things are ongoing, so if you do have information, I welcome you to share it with us, because certainly, that's information that's critical to what we do here. Second question, safe routes to school. Can you, are any of the streets around the perimeter of this identified in your safe routes to school? And what exactly does that mean, if it is? Can you help me out there?
I can do my best. Our superintendent is here tonight, and she may be able to help as well. There was a big constituency of people that got together in our boardroom just a few weeks ago, including Scott from the Police Department, a variety of people had had a several-hour meeting on safe routes to school, and I think I got sanctioned to my office to work on the budget or something, so I missed it. But I do believe a couple of the streets there are included in that program.
Okay.
I would appreciate it.
Yeah. We come as a team, so.
Hi, everyone. I'm Diana Body, the superintendent. I guess as far as safe routes to school, this is really a relationship that the school district has to have with the town. And just so everyone understands it, the school district doesn't apply for a grant to the state, and those monies are gone, so we have to work in relationship with the town, which is what we are doing. We have a huge contingency of parents within all of our sites who are very passionate about making sure that our children have those safe routes. So we are continually working with the town, and we have relationships with the Police Department as far as having crossing guards at different locations, and working with the Police Department and the town, and our SRO officer, which is our Safe Routes Officer, our School Resource Officer, to help with that. But again, it's a long-term plan, and I will say, this is another area that we, schools have really sort of suffered. There used to be lots of money to school sites, and we could apply as a school site or as a school district. Money is about $20,000 or $30,000 to do that, and now we have to work in relationship with the town to do that.
So specifically with, I'm interested in that crosswalk on Los Gattis Boulevard where Shannon is. I do notice there's a lot of traffic from school students going on that. I guess what I'm looking at, is there something that we need to be looking at as we look at development along Los Gattis Boulevard, because it is heavily used by students?
So I would say yes, and that just comes from past experience. So having worked in other school districts, the town has typically paid for crossing guards in those kinds of scenarios, but given that the town is in a tough place, the school district shares that cost. So our home and school clubs raise money for us to have safe crossing guards at all of those sites. That's not a town mandate, a state mandate, and so it's really out of necessity, and working together with the town on a plan to do that. So you see that in all areas at all of our sites.
So in addition to crossing guards, anything else that we need to be considering? Bike lanes, sidewalk, there was a discussion about sidewalks. There certainly, and one of this project's community benefits are sidewalks on Mitchell.
So what we've seen is a huge increase in our children riding their bikes to school. So we've had all parents at all of our sites, especially Van Meter, would like more bike racks. So any consideration of putting in more bike paths to school, I will say that it is growing at our district. We are also at full capacity at all of our sites. And the one site that we are working on right now is Lexington, which is where we would, as far as a district, if we have more residents coming in and more children, they would probably be routed right now to Lexington for that purpose. But we are looking, Leslie and I are working with the board on looking on long-term solutions. It's wonderful, us, we're going to continue the quality of education that we're doing, but we, again, look to the town as a resource and as a partner to help us with some of the safety issues when we're talking about children.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Doug Braga.
Hi, I'm Doug Braga. I live on 16942 Mitchell Avenue. I've been a resident there 48 years. I'm not in favor of the proposed project as it's presented. I condensed pages of notes, and I'll try to hit them timely. There's a, you know, I have a concern for the town's personality and the culture of our town. I noticed many letters speaking against this project in your packet that I received this afternoon, and which they express the same concern. The high-density, high-occupancy-type neighborhood that they're proposing with 22 homes is, at this point, better than 44 and better than 24. I, you know, I'm not against putting homes there. I do see a downside to losing commercial property in our town inventory, but we have such an abundance at this point, I just hate to look back on it and say, "I wish we had it back." The size of the units per, the ratio, the square foot ratio, concerns me. I understand that it's high-density, but, and I'm glad that they had a community space that they gave back to the people, or the homes, and gave them a little bit larger yards, which is to their, the future residents' advantage. But that's still, there's 11 homes with the 70s. Far ratio, seven in the 60s, two in the 50s, and the smallest is one in the 40s. Let's see, the high-density homes affecting our overcrowded schools, which we just addressed, I'm concerned about safety on that street. I watch it daily. And there's a proposal to put another sidewalk in on the other side of Mitchell, which just narrows the street even more. I wasn't even in favor of the one on the north side of Mitchell, just because watching the, how parents park on the street and then double park, and it just gets pretty crazy if you're ever around there, when they're dropping off and picking up. So you'd be narrowing that street even more. So, parking congestion, 22 homes, and then the amount of parking that would overflow on the street tonight, it's bumper-to-bumper, and it's only because of a back-to-school night for the preschool. But with weekend soccer and baseball, that street gets highly impacted as Nino and Roberts and Fisher Avenue. Mark restored to, mentioned restoring the historic pattern of that neighborhood. There were four homes on Mitchell before the dealership expanded its parking, its used car lot. And in the size of the lots, it would have been four homes on the other side, on Roberts. But I wasn't there, I only can go back 48 years. I don't know, the dealership was always there 48 years ago on the other half, but that would be eight homes in total, if you wanted to do the historic pattern of that neighborhood, not 22 homes. So my suggestion would be to lower the density of those homes.
Thank you. Any questions? Next speaker is Eileen Werner.
My name is Eileen Werner, and I am a resident at 16400 Bonnie Lane. And my question that I pose to you tonight is, what type of community does the town of Los Gattis want to become? Do we want to become a self-sustaining community, or do we want to be serviced by others? This project site before us, in my opinion, begs this question. question. I support, and I believe I represent, a number of your constituents what Santa Clara Development originally proposed, which was a mixed-use project, just with less housing, less density. And I know there was a comment made here tonight that this wasn't about density, but I believe strongly, in fact, it is about density. So less density. I think Santa Clara Development was conceptually on the right track when they first presented this to you as a mixed-use. We understand that the general plan serves as a guiding framework and is a kind of blueprint to work from. However, if we set the paper aside, we can recognize that this site is unique to not only a blend of commercial, retail, and residential, but additionally, and even though we have the issue of Senate Bill 50, which prevents us from considering the schools, let's recognize that it makes this site unique because we have the three schools. We've got Fisher Middle School at 1,046 students. We have Van Meter at 627 students. And then we have a preschool of toddlers with dozens of students. And so these numbers are big. And so it makes this site unique. Therefore, in light of these facts, we must address the density. This planned development is too high in density and not a land use goal. Most of your constituents do not support at this location. We have at the former Ford site an approved development with dense housing. We are not that density at this unique site. We are not a density of Winchester Boulevard at 85, nor are we on a light-rail corridor. That would make it different. And regarding transit, this is a community that really doesn't take the bus. They're going to drive. We support placing homes along Mitchell Avenue. This is reasonable. I'm not against housing. Placing them along Mitchell Avenue and leaving Los Gatos Boulevard and Roberts Road for retail and commercial. We need to zone for long-term economic benefits. I think the short term equals housing. I think the long term equals support of diversity of business. And I don't think we want to lose that, because when we lose that diversity, we lose the innovation. Am I over?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Next speaker is Beverly Bryant.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. It's late, but let me just say a few words. I'm Beverly Bryant. I live at 16940 Placer Oaks Road, Los Gatos. I am a neighbor. I ride bicycle regularly, passed and through this site, so I know it well. I ask you to support the proposal. This is an excellent project. I've looked at it. I've looked at Bluebird. I know this builder. If you've lived here for a while, you do, you know the Vessona project when he converted Villa Felice. It's well thought out. The construction, frankly, is very attractive. The homes do match the homes on George Street, for instance. I think this is very good, and I think it fits into the neighborhood very well. It's timely because it's going to fill a hole on this Los Gatos Boulevard. I believe that the town recommendations in terms of the specific plan for the Boulevard, in terms of going forth with a flow into the residential area as we move south, is important. We really don't need another Honda dealership kind of building there, and I think that the kind of housing that's proposed is a good transition and leads forward into the main part of the town where there is commercial. Also, I think that the fact that the two new affordable housing units will be built is really important. I think the planners talked about that. A four-bedroom affordable housing unit on site is amazing. I've just -- I've never heard of one before, actually. And the second thing, to have a site that is going to be pretty much ready to be used as affordable housing quickly once it's identified, I think will be good. Finally, I think that you've got a quality project by a quality builder, and that I really think you should recognize is something very, very important. This town believes it's got quality, wants more quality, and Mark Robson's firm has been shown to do that throughout this community and many others. Please vote in favor of this project. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Next speaker is Paul Ducharme.
My name is Paul Ducharme, and I live at 222 Caldwell. So I am that famous speaker who lives right across from the Bluebird Lane. Had I seen you, Commissioner O'Donnell, walking today, I would have had you in for coffee, or perhaps Scotch. And Commissioner Jensen, I'd seen you drive down our street. So I'll wave to you next time. A couple of comments that I wanted to make. First off, I can so empathize with the people in the room who have lived across from an abandoned or vacant commercial establishment, because I lived across the street from an abandoned vacant convalescent home for about four years. And my greatest disappointment, to be totally honest, in Los Gatos is I raised two of my three sons where their experience of youth was living across from an abandoned convalescent home, when it could have been living across from Bluebird Lane. At the same time, I so respect the work that you do as a commission, because what originally was a proposal for Bluebird Lane did not end up being what became Bluebird Lane through this kind of deliberative type of exercise. And we are blessed for what we now live across the street from. So my wife and I sit on our front porch more than we ever have before. We look out now over a neighborhood. We have a neighbor who comes over and steals our lemons. But we actually have neighbors that we now know and meet, and we aren't living across from what, again, is an abandoned property. And we treasure the fact that we now have this neighborhood across from us. I totally respect your points about density, but I have to be honest, from the perspective of one who lives across the street, I don't know what density means. I mean, we walk into the neighborhood, yes, there are sidewalks. We walk on those sidewalks. There are neighbors and houses, and it seems like there's a few houses in that area that's still being built out, but it's an absolutely beautiful place, and the individuals living there seem to be incredibly happy. To the point about the construction, yes, I live exactly across the street from where those big trucks park, and they have all that wood. And I'm the one who tries to get in my driveway and realize it takes them about 15 minutes to set that truck up, and then I want to pull in my driveway. And what I say is, don't worry, I'll leave it in the road. And the integrity and the professionalism of that crew who say, we don't want you to leave your car in the road, we'll move the truck just so that you can get in. It's the experience of living across has not been great, because obviously, it's disruptive, but the integrity and the personality of the people doing the work, I think, is indicative of the quality of the projects because they're first-rate individuals who are very thoughtful about the people who live across the street, and they've turned what could be a very disruptive experience into something that, for us, has been very manageable. So those are the points that I wanted to make, and I encourage you to support the project.
Thank you. Any comments? So we now have your address, and we now know you have lemons and Scotch. Next speaker is Bridget Garza.
I'm Bridget Garza, and I live at 16951 Mitchell, on the corner of Mitchell and Fisher. I'm an old-time resident. I remember when there were houses there before. And I'm delighted we're going back to homes rather than the ugliest building in Los Gatos that is there now. So that part delights me. I am a little concerned that they're taking out 18 of the 20 trees on the lot. My other concerns are, some are personal. We also own the duplex on George Street, and while we'll be living through that, knowing something better is coming, renters don't have to do that, so they may choose not to live in a duplex while this is going on. The other concerns I have about traffic, we sometimes have to leave -- you try not to leave at 8:30 in the morning, but we had a medical appointment this morning to say people don't walk down Mitchell. Those children were coming consistently, totally. My husband had to get out there and hold them back so I could back the car out, because we were so afraid. They come on skateboards, they come on bicycles down the sidewalk. That house -- the whole street of Mitchell was backed up from Los Gatos Boulevard to Fisher, and Fisher was backed up from where we got on it there at Mitchell, all the way to Roberts. And Roberts Road was all backed up all the way to Blossom Hill. And then to think of 22 more families coming in, who may also need to try and leave at that time, is very hard to consider that going on. Also, I'd like to address the public notification. We receive no public notification of any of these meetings or discussions that went on. Our neighbors also say they did not, so I don't know how they were sent or given, but we didn't receive any notification at all about these. So that's my only concern.
It seems you have a question, Commissioner Jensen?
I just wanted to ask you about the public meetings. Are you referring to meetings that Santa Clara Development might have had, or are you referring to meetings that the town is holding?
In here, in this booklet, it says, a written notice was sent to property owners and tenants within 300 feet of the property. We didn't receive that. Then it says the applicant had two neighborhood meetings. I don't know. We were never notified of any neighborhood meeting. And posted signs announcing proposed project. We never saw any posted signs. We walk around that area. We didn't see them. And it said there were two neighborhood meetings in March of 2010 and 2011, and we were not aware of any of those meetings.
Thank you. Okay, the last speaker is Susan Castaneda. And again, this is the last speaker card I have tonight, so if you were interested in speaking, please submit a card before we close public testimony.
Hi, I'm Susan Castaneda. I live at 126 Vista del Prado. And I'm a local Realtor here in Los Gatos. Work for Cobble Banker. And I have to say, we bring a lot of relocation clients in. And driving down Los Gatos Boulevard, truly, I think I'm reiterating what a lot of people have said, but it's an eyesore. People that are coming in new to thinking of relocating in this beautiful town are kind of taken aback at the vacant commercial space on Los Gatos Boulevard. So I'm very much in support. I think we have a lack of inventory of housing currently in Los Gatos, so it would be a good thing. Again, I think people have spoken to the quality of the builder. We've got someone that's doing, I think we were talking about doing a 150 rating as opposed to a 50 rating. I think that's substantial. I think it lends itself to the architectural integrity of the town. I think bringing in 24 new families will help bring more dollars into our town to be spent. We have a lot of businesses that are just, you know, we're trying to keep them here, so I think it's good to have more families here for that. So I encourage you to support it. And the one last thing, as far as the sidewalks, I personally like the fact that it is a smaller, what they propose, the more of like a little walking street. I think if you make it wider and you put the sidewalk, you are encouraging the skateboarders and the scooters and the kids to make that cut through, as opposed to staying on the two main arterials that would be feeding into the schools. So I think keeping it narrower and more quaint keeps it more family-oriented. So that's it.
Thank you. Okay. So Mr. Robson, you're back on, and as you know, you have three minutes.
Thank you. It'll be a little difficult to cover this in three minutes, to answer all the questions that have been raised. You know, I would like to talk about what we're doing on the Boulevard, if we go to a section real quick. And what the last speaker talked about was the approach to -- and what it's like to approach that eyesore out there. You know, in this section here, we're dedicating a lot of space along the Boulevard, as you saw in the video, to landscaping. And I think it is the -- it's going to really soften that edge, and it's a huge improvement. And I think that it's the right improvement. As you approach, as I said earlier, as you approach this section of Los Gatos Boulevard, it becomes more residential. And I think this is going to be way more consistent than what's there now. And I think it's going to look better than a commercial building would, you know, up on the edge of the street or parking on the edge. I think that to either one, this is going to be far superior from a design perspective. Relative to the -- there was a question raised about parking on the nine homes. We do have five parking spaces in there, but I want to mention this, that a couple of things relative to that. We have larger garages on those homes, so that they have more room for storage, and we purposely enlarged the garages there. Those homes also have an excellent attic access and storage area in the -- in the homes to provide extra storage, which I think is important. And we'll also have in our CCNRs, and we've had good success with this, making sure that people park in their garages. And so those five parking spaces will be used for guest parking spaces. With respect to schools, I know that that's a big issue, and I know that the housing is going to have an impact. We are, and I understand what SB 50 says, we are willing, in addition to the standard fee, to increase our -- and make a direct payment to the school district above and beyond that amount of an additional $150,000 that they can use for bike racks and other things that, you know, because I understand that there's going to be an impact that we're going to create, and I'm going to make that offer. My understanding from the people of the school district is they -- and I saw the video at the Swanson Ford, where Leslie came up and said, hey, I'm going to work with developers. And my understanding is, to date, no one else has stepped forward. I'm willing to step forward and pay an additional $150,000. I understand the impact that we're going to make. Relative to the trees, we are taking some trees out, but we're planting them with 80 additional trees. And some of those trees are really, really large, as I showed earlier in my slides. Safe routes, I got to go back to the safe routes to schools. We are doing a lot in terms of improvements out there to improve the safe route to school, not to mention just the boulevards, but also the Parkway, which is going to pull people off of the street and make for a much safer street. And I think people are going to tend to use the Boulevard more because of the experience that we're going to create out there as well. And the sidewalk, we, as the project moves forward, we can work that into the project as well.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Robson? Commissioner Erickson?
Couple of quick questions, Mr. Robson. So can you -- if I want to be sure I understand correctly the parking issue. So on the private street, on Robson Avenue, there will be five on-street parking spaces on the interior private street. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, there are 12 houses. I want to be sure I understand all the numbers correctly. There are 12 houses that face onto that street, of which only three of the 12 have driveway depths which will allow parking in the driveway.
I'm going to have to recount. I think there's really 10 sort of internal houses, because the other ones on the corners, their front doors are out on the street, and there's parking right in front of those. So there's five -- there's 10 houses in here. I think that's the right number. And there, these three houses have driveway aprons. And so it's really, it's five parking stalls for one, two, three, four, five houses that aren't right adjacent to the street with a front door that goes out to the street and where someone's going to park closest to the front door, which would be there. And so the parking stalls, there's five parking stalls for those homes, and as I mentioned about what we're doing to the design.
Great. I was having trouble trying to figure that out. So in the -- on Robson Avenue, that in the interior street, have you, did you consider that being, ever that being a one-way street as a way to address some of the traffic, pedestrian -- I like what you did with, I understand, the curvature of the street, the kind of paving. What would making it a one-way street do in terms of circulation? It may have circulation, but it also might cause the traffic and might be -- you might be able to add a sidewalk and shrink the size of the street at the same time.
We could consider that. What I like about the way we have it is that it allows someone who's coming back from the other side of town to come in and make a right turn in here, so that the people who live on Mitchell, you know, aren't impacted. So from a traffic standpoint, I kind of like the way it disperses traffic throughout the neighborhood, you know, for people living there. And so I sort of like the way we've got that planned. And, you know, I do believe in the way that we've got it designed. I think it's a good design. I really do. And I think it would be superior to going to a one-way street. But, you know, we can look at that a little further and study that.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I think you do a great job. But I just want to go back for one minute. We're not supposed to design supposed to design things, and there's a good reason for that. So I'm not trying to design anything. But we've been talking about this sidewalk. And I was impressed today when I walked on the sidewalk you have on the private street in Bluebird. And I thought, gosh, you don't have it here. But I've now heard conflicting opinions as to whether it's a good thing, it isn't a good thing. One of the people who spoke said, gosh, by not having a sidewalk there, it'll give it a, a different feel, and maybe people aren't going to think of it as a, a street they can cross. What is your thought? Because you said, oh, you know, we can put in a sidewalk if that's important. It strikes me as a good thing, but I would like your take on that.
We designed it with pavers. We designed it that way because we didn't think that we needed a sidewalk. I thought aesthetically, it would work better. We also talked about the, you know, about traffic crossing through. And having a narrower street would, we thought would limit that. I also believe that with what we're doing on the Boulevard, I think that's going to completely enhance the, the experience out there. I don't know that people are necessarily going to, you know, are going to cross, are going to cut through. And I think that when you have, my experience is, when you go into a courtyard with special paving treatment, you tend to slow down, and it's a better aesthetic experience. And it really feels like you're in a plaza. And it does work well, and it feels like it's a place for cars and for people. I mean, it, they do it that way in Europe, and it works. And, you know, it doesn't work here when it's black asphalt and a gray curb. And for good reason, because there's no texture, there's no interest, and it's just, you know, a lot of things. I'm not, you know, I can't completely explain, you know, some of the art that happens in the eye. I can't tell you, for example, why, when you put trees up in front of a house on a street tree pattern, it actually feels, you know, something that would feel dense feels less dense because of those street trees, but it does. You'd think putting more in there would make it feel different. And this is sort of the same thing. I can't quite explain it, but I do know that when I've experienced it, it does feel better. And I don't think it's necessary. I think the way we have it designed works. You know, I think that, you know, if you've, if you, especially when you, you know, I think about the Harry Potter movie, for some reason, that image is in my mind. Now, that was a black street, but it had, it didn't have the big heavy curb. And you go in there, and cute little houses, and there was no sidewalk in there. And it, it, it was consistent with the architecture that we're doing. I think it worked fine. And I think this will work based on my experience over the years entering small courts like this. I think it works great. I really do. But if it's something you guys want us to work on, we can do that.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bushwell?
Thank you, Mr. Robson. I want to jump to the BMP issue for a second. Just wondering if the commission and/or town council eventually is not open to the idea of an off-site BMP. I'm just wondering what, what your Plan B is.
We'd put them onsite.
So it's, it's completely doable?
Yeah, we had a, we had a plan that, that had the, because it said, in the CDAC, they said we could cluster them. We had an earlier plan that had two small BMPs. The plan has actually opened up quite a bit since then, because we, we took out one of the homes on the end, and we gave ourselves more space. So I think that we can make, we can accommodate that.
So would you do, would you just pick one of the units as is, or would it mean a redesign and that we wouldn't be getting that four-bedroom BMP? I mean, I'm sure it's going to ripple through, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Relative to what we offer, yeah, it wouldn't be a four-bedroom BMP. It would be two smaller units. And that was really the trade that we made, was, one, you're getting a four-bedroom, that's a standard house. It's not even the smallest house in the project. It's not even the worst location in the project. So it's, you know, we, that was sort of the trade. But we can make that work if that's the direction, if that's what happens.
Thank you.
Mr. Robson, with your other developments, specifically Bluebird, well, that's the only one that I know of, what was your Build It Green score with those? Were you aiming for higher than 50 with those, or?
No, we weren't. We were aiming for 50. And that was where, that was the standard. But I do want to add something that I think is pretty important relative to the green movement and so forth, is that, and we've gotten some numbers from people who live at the Bluebird Lane houses. And those houses are quite a bit larger than these. And these are 3,000 square foot plus homes. And it's crazy, but the PG&E bills from two people that live there, July and August, are less than $200 a month, $150 and $175 a month. I mean, it's, once, one, it was 150 and 175? I guess 75 and 125. I mean, which are incredibly low numbers. And it's because when you look at the Greenpoint standards, one of the places you get the most points is good old Title 24, you know, state mandate. I think the tightness of the homes and the insulation and all those things, and, and also using instant hot water and so forth has made a, a big difference. But I mean, just using less power is, I think, a good thing. I mean, from the, from the word go. So this is different, and it's, but the, the direction is certainly to, is to do things like adding fly ash to our concrete and a more efficient irrigation system and, and doing things like that. It makes good sense. I mean, I think it's an important thing, and, and that's the direction we're headed.
And one other question. You said something earlier that piqued my interest, the work-live-unit homes. It's, it's something you're throwing around, but talk to me more about it. And if you were to do it, where would you place them? How many were, were you thinking about?
I was thinking that it would be at the corner of, first of all, Roberts and Los Gatos Boulevard. That's where I first started thinking about it, you know, for the same, yeah, Lot 22, for the same reasons that you were thinking about it. And thinking that someone moves in there, do you want some flexibility? They have to come back to the town. You know, how do you, you know, can you give them the flexibility to do that? But, you know, so we haven't gone much, frankly, beyond that thinking. But, you know, we do, we do have large setbacks there. There's a stone wall out along the front. I mean, we'll see what happens. But it's, you know, we, we haven't gone beyond the thinking stage relative to where else we might do it. Lot 16 on the other end, and that was really the only place. On the other end of the private street, that would be out on Mitchell, because there's a, a law office across the street. And I thought, well, if you're going to give people the flexibility, why not give it on, on both ends? And that's, that is really the, and we've, I've looked at the floor plan and asked myself, how would it work? And I've toyed with that a bit. But, you know, through ANS, if we pursue that thinking, we're, we'll probably play with the floor plan a bit to get that, so that it does convert better.
One of the reasons I ask is, close to your location on Magnuson Loop, you have that row that looks very residential, yet is office. And I, I think that looks very nice, and it would be a nice complement to that. So I'm curious to know what else you're thinking. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you for your time. And I am now going to close the public testimony portion.
Thank you very much.
And commissioners, if you have any questions of staff, now is it a good time to ask them? Commissioner Johnson?
My question is with respect to traffic and community benefit. I'm assuming that because there was a determination that somehow this proposal resulted in less traffic than was existing with the Los Gatos Honda dealership, that there is no community benefit requirement, and there is no mitigation requirement for that intersection. So Ms. Brennan was talking about Shannon Roberts intersection. And this project isn't doing anything with respect to that. Is that because there was a determination that there is no traffic impact?
I don't know that anything's being done specifically to that intersection. A lot of the engineers answered that question. But you're correct on your statements on the community benefit. It is not required.
Well, sometimes we get projects, and they say, okay, we're going to put a signal in, we're going to restripe something, we're going to put it, that's not happening. They're just-
Well, they are, actually, he's off, they are doing-
The bowl bouts.
The bowl bouts, the median, and the sidewalk on both sides of Mitchell, in addition to the contribution that you just agreed to make to the school district.
I'm looking for community benefit. I'm just wondering why we're not, it's not being specifically addressed, and why we're not seeing specific traffic mitigation measures.
Commissioner Erickson?
It seems to me that I have to think about this project in the, in a context. So the challenge for the town, a big challenge for the town, as we've discussed earlier, is what do we do, what kind of development do we do along Los Gatos Boulevard? As all of us know, we have large tracts of land that are becoming available. We will make decisions as a planning commission and decisions as a town council that will shape the future. And we have a stewardship responsibility, as the commission and the council does, for the character of the town, so that Los Gatos remains Los Gatos. That doesn't necessarily mean that Los Gatos in 2011 is Los Gatos of 1911 or 1961. It means that we need to interpret what the Los Gatos of 2011 and what the Los Gatos of 2025 will be. And as we make the decisions about stewarding the character of the town, we have to do it with that kind of context. In considering those, the development of those, we, it's not as simple as to say, wow, we wish a whole bunch of car dealerships would come back to town and generate a bunch of revenue for the town. It's not quite that simple. I doubt that that's likely to happen. So we have to think very carefully about what is the, what are the appropriate uses, and what are the balance of types of uses that will be, that are possible to consider. And in particular, what is the appropriate balance between residential and other uses in those areas? While there's been discussion earlier tonight about the fact that the Los Gatos Boulevard plan is under some consideration for revision, that's true, as I understand. But presently, we have a Los Gatos Boulevard plan. The town council prior to the, at the early stages of the general plan update reiterated their position that the Los Gatos plan, the Los Gatos Boulevard plan was okay, and they didn't want to make any revisions at that moment. There's a principle in the plan that I don't, I've not heard any discussion about changing, and that is that we will transition from high-density, non-residential use to residential use as you move south on the Boulevard. I don't believe that, that, that principle will change when we get the new Los Gatos Boulevard plan. So there, so the question is, exactly where is the right transition to full residential? It seems to me that this is an appropriate place for that transition to occur, given the property that's around it, that is all residential. And that, and as we think about the proper balance between the need for commercial space, retail space, and residential space, in the town, we have lots of other opportunities. We may, we don't want to naively preserve commercial, retail, non-residential space in the town in the hope that it'll be developed, and it never gets developed. So we have to actively figure out what is the proper balance between those two, while being mindful that there's a significant impact when we add residential on the schools, that they're not able to accommodate in the short term. That seems to me the biggest challenge with understanding what the right balance is. We can do that balance in isolation, but we can't do that without thinking about the impacts on the schools. So we have to figure that out as a community, not just leaving it to the school district. One of the reasons that there's a, there's a Exhibit 23 in the, the desk packet tonight, that was in part a result of my asking the staff to do an analysis of what are the trip generation rates for different kinds of uses, as one way for us to think about how, what's the appropriate use in this space. Unless we, that analysis suggests, unless we put senior housing on this space, the development of resident, fully residential space, as is proposed, has the, has the lowest traffic impact in that area. So if we assume that the property is going to be developed for some purpose, that won't be left undeveloped, eventually, this seems to me to be a reasonable and appropriate, and has in fact, unless we were to put senior housing there, the lowest traffic impact on an area, which we need to be very sensitive about traffic. That said, it seems to me that, that this is an appropriate use, given that context for this space. I'm also impressed by the fact that the, the developer came forward with a very responsible and responsive BMP proposal for the town that allows us to both have a moderate level income with a good-sized home and a right-away, low-income BMP unit. It's a high-quality project, and the developer's also proposing some improvements that he's not fully required to do, but is doing as by, I believe, both a responsible developer and as a, as a resident of the town. So I think it's a very reasonable and responsible proposal for us to consider. I have concerns about pedestrian safety in the area, whether, I'm not positive what the right solution for the interior street is and the impact on that. But I'm most concerned about impact on the schools. But I don't think that we can call timeout with all the developers in town until we solve that problem. I'm not sure what the answer is. But I don't think we can do nothing until, while we're waiting to figure out what that answer is.
Thank you, Commissioner Erickson, Commissioner O'Donnell, and Commissioner Bushwell.
I appreciate those remarks, and I have no intention of trying to repeat any of that. And I, I think I'm pretty much in agreement with what was just said. But I did want to say something about schools, because I'm very, very sensitive to schools. And I've, I feel very handcuffed by Senate Bill 50. On the other hand, I thought this offer of $150,000, I may be simple, but I found it a very good offer. And, and nobody's ever done that before in my eight years here. And I, I appreciate that. If we had more people who would step up to the plate and do that, it would certainly help the school district. Now, I, I don't know dollars and cents. I know occasionally, they, they say, gosh, we need another school. Well, not going to give you another school. But they will get, assuming, they get the $150,000, plus they get the square footage allotment that the legislature in its beneficence gives them. So that's better. That's better than anybody else. The school district has essentially said, could we kind of slow it down a little bit? And we can't do that. We have to take these things as they come to us. Our questions, at least my questions, earlier this evening, really revolve around what people talk about. I'm troubled by what's happening to our schools. We have great schools, and I want to keep them great. And I think our superintendent has a next-to-impossible job, but apparently is doing it well. The density troubles me. On the other hand, it's within what we allocate for that kind of property. Mr. Robson does, I think, a very, very good job. And that helps. I mean, when you deal with somebody and you know what they do, you feel a little more comfortable. The BMP, we in the past would have said, no, we don't, you can want it there. That's what, in fact, that, we have said that in the past. On the other hand, the offer here has some real wrinkles to it. The size of the unit, the four bedrooms, the off-site, more immediate use. I find those proposals to be very good. And as far as that sidewalk is concerned, you know, I would be, I would certainly be guided by staff, because I am not a designer. I did like his sidewalk, and I found it good. It's quite possible, but not having a sidewalk and having the treatment in the street is just as good. That's not my expertise. I raised the question. I personally would rely on staff to come up with that, with Mr. Robson. So those are my only comments.
Commissioner Bushwell?
Thank you. As much as I would love to see a revised Los Gatos plan, and we, we take all these projects in, in the same context, you know, that's, that's not, that's not what's before us. And I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon, quite frankly. So dealing with what we have, I do think a residential use at this site is consistent with our general plan. If you look at policy LU 12.8, it states pretty explicitly that this site should be residential. It's pretty clear in our recently updated general plan. So I, I fully support a full residential use of this parcel. There are a lot of things to like about this project. The architectural diversity, the size and the style, I think, is, is above and beyond what we normally see. And it's exactly what we want to see. We want to see, you know, eclectic, diverse neighborhoods with different sizes and different styles. And I think you've done a good job there. The landscaping plan is great. I love the frontage on Los Gatos Boulevard, the features, the streetscape that you're providing there. I think those are, those are good. The offer to the schools is fantastic. I also genuinely support the concept of the smaller road with, with, you know, to slow down traffic. I think there's been some planning studies that show that that's pretty effective in slowing traffic down in neighborhoods. So I'm, I'm generally supportive of that concept. A little concerned about the cut through here, but I, I, I think with a different material, it will set a different tone for that street. The things that concern me, first, the BMP unit. I'm very much opposed to having it off-site. Worked with a couple fellow commissioners here and other members on the general plan committee to work on that policy. And it was very clear that off-site was to be for very special circumstances. We're- We're concerned, I'm concerned about even though the offer has some appeal, and I can understand the appeal of that offer of having it instantly and having a for-sale unit, I think it's a slippery slope of starting to let people go off-site, and then we start having areas of town that become the BMP part of town. And I think the policy is very clear, we want them onsite in new developments to avoid that, and having people go to one part of town and always fulfill their BMP units there. And so, I think it's a slippery slope, so I would very strongly recommend that we, we hold that line, and that the council members that have been on, on the committee have felt the same way to date. You know, they can always change their mind. The other thing is the density, and I think what gets me is the language that Commissioner Jensen read earlier about the purpose of a PD, and it's for, you know, excellence in design and optimization of open space. And I see some, I see some excellence in the design, but I really, I think the density and the open space go hand-in-hand, and, you know, you say you've maximized the yard space, but these still look like small lot, single-family homes to me. It's still, it's still a very dense project, so I'm concerned about the density. So, the BMP units and the density are the two issues for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Bushwa. Before, I do want to ask Mr. Rahani, several issues have come up with traffic. Were there any comments you wanted to make with regard to this project? I'd know that engineering has taken a look at it.
Yes, if I may.
Yes, please.
Chair Seac. A couple of things I'll just briefly touch upon. On the traffic component of the project, some comments was made earlier by speakers about, well, what we could do to reconfigure, let's say, the intersection of perhaps Shannon and Los Catos Boulevard and Nino. Los Catos is a, is a unique community in many senses, whereas it's an older community, a lot of the layout of the roads were done many, many years ago. We have in Los Catos three offset intersections. Most intersections are square and very conventional. In Los Catos, we have on Los Catos Boulevard, at Roberts, Shannon, Nino, they're offset. Also, on Blossom Hill, at Cherry Blossom, we have the same configuration where your four leg of intersection are not directly across from each other. So, those signals look unconventional, but they work. We configure them differently than, we would do a more regular intersection, but from a functionality, they work to make those intersections. If time and money and everything was no object, it would take a huge undertaking, which certainly the town, I don't think is in a position to reconfigure those intersection to make them a more square intersection. So, that's from an intersection perspective. Also, was talked about the traffic element of this project, as mentioned, and we have worked extensively with, with the developer. Both the intersections in front of this project, and we do look at the level of service, the level of service of this project after it's developed, it will function at the same level as it does to the level of service of Bs and Cs, which is within the existing town of Los Catos standards per our general plan. So, our level of service of this intersection will function as it is. Certainly, like any areas, we have in front of high school, there's going to be a period that during the school AM and PM, there's going to be congestion, but outside of those AM and PM school, the signals, this intersection will, will function level of Bs and Cs, which is pretty good considering we have intersections who operate at lower levels. One other thing, discussion about the sidewalks on the private street, I just, I want to offer from the engineering perspective, what the developer has proposed to put textured material or pavers on that surface, this actually, we agree with the concept, this will slow down the traffic. People don't like to drive on textured surfaces, even on a regular traffic or even for cut-through traffic. So, this will give it a more driveway feeling. If our option was, from my perspective at least, having a sidewalk and making an asphalt roadway or concrete roadway versus a textured, textured roadway, a little bit narrower, I think that would provide a better operational for all parties involved, especially with the ride-in, ride-out from Roberts Road. Again, from our perspective, that's the better solution, but however the commission wishes, we can work with the, with the applicant on that.
Thank you, Mr. Rahani. I've been notified that it is now 11:30, and our meeting guideline states that we meet till 11:30. Can I have a motion to extend our meeting time? Commissioner Bushwa?
I'll move to extend tonight's meeting time to no later than midnight.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes six, zero. Okay, so, let's continue. One more comment, Mr. Rahani?
Yes, Madam Chair, one more comment, not regarding the traffic, but regarding the constructability issues. Again, that was, we had from speakers, the neighbors of their, the current project that the applicant is building on Bluebird Lane, and the other project they built along Winchester. We have worked both staff from engineering and building department after this project gets processed through planning and actually comes to building. We have worked pretty closely with the construction team on both of these projects, and I would say they have been very accommodating to our requirements, to a point of, and just things that perhaps sometimes we have asked for things that might have been unreasonable, but they've, they've been very accommodating, needless to say. In fact, for the Blue Lane project, that project is winding down, even though the houses, a few houses being left, but their off-site work along the Boulevard and Caldwell and Kennedy is all completed, and we are working with them over, within the next two weeks. There will be a resurfacing of Los Catos Boulevard along their frontage because there were some utility cuts made to make that attractive again and restrip it. So, that's the last part of that project that, again, we are working with them over the next couple of weeks to take place.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments? Commissioner Jensen?
I just want to make a big-picture comment. So, we're called the Planning Commission for a reason. We're supposed to plan, and increasingly, I think that plan developments are used not to deal with a difficult site, not to create great design. I'm not denying that Mr. Robson builds nice-looking houses, but he builds nice-looking houses and a lot of them in a small area, and that's what this is. We don't have open space. And so, I don't think that the plan development here is being used to deal with a difficult site or enhance design or do something that you couldn't otherwise do. It's been, it's been used to maximize available residential lots. That's why we have a small, non-regulation street with no sidewalks on it. And the CDAC is the conceptual development advisory committee. It's not a decisive body. So, while I appreciate that people follow the direction of the CDAC, the Planning Commission and Town Council don't necessarily have to do that, so it's not necessarily precedent for the Planning Commission. So, when we look at these things, I think we need to plan it. We can't just say, Mr. Robson builds nice-looking developments and leave it at that. We have to say, we have to demand that that development work where it is. This one, I think, is too dense. It doesn't have open space. It doesn't follow the intent of the plan development ordinance. It creates burdens that, while the offer of $150,000 is nice, there are burdens on the schools, there's burdens on the infrastructure, there's burdens on the town. And, you know, if you look at the little planning thing, the zoning map that I printed out of the area, all the road is commercial, and at the bottom is the Honda dealership. So, it's not a residential area. It's, it's a commercial-retail transitional area. And the market now is for residential, so developers come in and they want residential. But the market in the future may be for something else. So, if we convert this to residential without thinking about how we want to plan, we preclude an opportunity if the market changes. So, I want to look at this as a planner, and I'm not sure we're doing that. We're looking at aesthetics and what the market splits now, and I don't know if that's the most responsible decision for us to make.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll share some of my own. As I mentioned, at CDAC, I, I believed then, and I still believe now, that a mixed-use property would be, in my opinion, what would be the most appropriate use for that piece of land, particularly because of the, just because of the way the intersections work. And again, as, as Commissioner Jensen, just that, those lost opportunities. And I certainly understand the reason why it was taken off, not only the direction you were given, but just given the economic realities that we're currently facing, I certainly understand why that's there. So, the way I'm looking at it is, we're, we're kind of at a dilemma here. It's a PD, not a straight subdivision because it was an auto dealership, and Town Council wanted us to look at it and see how, whether it was an appropriate use based on losing revenue. So, given that direction, is it, is it appropriate to go to all residential? That's one philosophical academic discussion we can have. Then you get into these issues of, well, if you rezone it, as we could do to make it a clean subdivision, but then it conflicts with the underlying zone, because then that would preclude any future non-residential uses. But if you do build 22 homes, then that in essence closes that avenue. So, I'm in a quandary of how to proceed. I still believe along Los Catos Boulevard, there should be something. I'm very intrigued by this work unit livability. We've heard several discussions with past projects and past concepts of incubator-type spaces, a lot of people wanting to work from home. I see this as maybe a hybrid of that, providing retail, but providing commercial slash residential. It would certainly address Lot 22, which I still think would be a difficult lot for residential use. I understand the need for residential along Mitchell and George, and I do think that that would be less traffic-intensive than, than commercial or retail. So, you certainly have those positive aspects. As many of us have said, that your, your experience and your precedent in town is superb, you build beautiful houses, and testimony from everyone shows that people are pleased, and certainly that comes into effect. I'm not quite sure, though, that the density that we have here is, is necessarily the density that I feel comfortable with. If it is to move to all residential, then I do feel that it should try and mimic what would have been under the residential underlying zone if we moved it there. And so, that would follow the setbacks that would be, that would normally be there, the densities, the open space requirement. Certainly, that's something that we certainly look for in all PDs. I don't necessarily see that there. Again, I understand you took that out because of direction you got from, from CDAC. So, I am in a bit of quandary. I see, I certainly see the direction that you went, based on what we have here, but it's not necessarily the vision I had in 2010, and it's still not the vision I have here. So, I would support residential, but certainly not 22 homes, though. Okay. Any other comments? Oh, and one other thing, speaking of BMP, that was one other thing that staff wanted. I'm also one that would not support off-site BMP. I understand the trade-off, and, and I appreciate the four-bedroom house, but again, I wouldn't support it. Commissioner Jensen?
I just wanted to add that I also wouldn't support that. I was a member of the General Plan Committee that hashed out how BMP should look and how we should do it, and they were very much wanting to avoid isolating BMP units or not having them part of the development. So, I wouldn't want to set that precedent.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I'd like to make some comments. One is that, as I considered the site, I really do not consider this a viable commercial site. And so, with that, I, I have looked at the development. I find it an attractive development. I like that it's a known developer to us in Los Catos. I do have concerns about the density and lack of open space. I do wonder where all those little dogs are going to go, and the little toddlers on their two-wheel fire engines, or whatever it is they, they run around with. So, I do have a concern about that. I also have a concern about the parking, and I'm concerned that the parking is going to get pushed out to the side streets, which are already impacted. And I appreciate the offer of additional monies to the schools, and I'm sure that the town staff is going to figure out a way to take you up on that offer. I do not have, I do not have the same technical concerns as, as the two other commissioners do, and I am, I'm in favor of the project. So, that would be my, my direction tonight.
Anyone want to venture into a motion? Commissioner O'Donnell?
It appears to me it's three to three, but I, I'll go ahead and make the motion so we can find out if that's the case.
Can you turn on your microphone?
If I have to do that, I'm not sure I'll make the motion, but, okay. I'm going to move the rezoning of the project site from CH to CHPD, and the demolishing of the existing auto ship, auto dealership buildings, and the construction of 22 new Before I get into the findings on that, we also have to deal with this proposal to build a BMP unit off-site. And it is true that we spent a lot of time saying we wouldn't do that. I do think we did say it was fact-dependent. We didn't say, in those circumstances, would we do it. I will, for the purposes of this motion, include that both would be onsite. Now, the required findings for this are set forth explicitly in Exhibit 4, and I would incorporate those by reference. I would recommend that the Town Council make the mitigated negative declaration, which is set forth in Exhibit 2, and adopt the mitigation monitoring plan, which is set forth in Exhibit 3, and recommend that the Town Council approve the plan development application, subject to the performance standards included in the PD ordinance Exhibit 10, as I think amended. The commission may, and those are the only conditions I have, so that would be the motion.
So, we have a, a motion for recommendation for approval to council. Again, this is a recommendation to them with BMPs onsite, two BMPs onsite. Commissioner Erickson, you have your hand raised?
Would the maker of the motion consider a couple of other additions or amendments to the motion, that Section 5.3 of the draft ordinance, which specifies that the DRC is the, will be the architectural and site application, replace that with the Planning Commission, and also to incorporate explicitly the $150,000 contribution from the developer?
Yes.
I will then second the motion.
Okay. So, we have a-
There's a question.
Oh, yes.
I think I would caution the commission that while there was an offer made, it's an offer to the school district directly, and while you can certainly indicate your intent and support in moving that along to council and clearly encourage it, I do believe that it may be beyond the purview of a planning commission for land use purposes. But I'm open to-
That certainly makes a lot of sense, but let me ask you, I would like to, if we could possibly pin it down, I would like to pin it down. An offer has been made, and it's been made to us for the benefit of the school district. And I don't see any reason why we can't accept that offer for the benefit of the school district. We're not, one, we're not extracting it. We have not asked for it. It has been offered very generously, and it's been offered to us. It was not offered to the school district. The offer to us was, we know that for this town, and therefore, we offer $150,000, and I certainly will, your opinion will certainly supersede mine, but I would love to be able to pin that down, and if we simply said, great, we accept that offer, it's not coming to us, and it's been made for the school district, I would feel a lot more comfortable. Not because I don't trust Mr. Robson, because I do trust him. It's just, you like to dot the i's and cross the t's.
And I certainly appreciate it. Staff, in all of our notes, heard it more as an offer from the developer to the district, not necessarily as a pass-through to the town to incentivize the project. I would still strongly recommend that the commission acknowledge it, that it's certainly a basis for your recommendation to Town Council, and then perhaps we'll work with the developer, the school district- the school district, and before town council, and see if we can solidify that a little bit more as-
I'll be glad to follow your advice. The second year of the motion?
May I ask a question? I don't, yeah, this is a quick one. So, can the town accept money, accept a contribution, and earmark it for a purpose to another agency?
In some ways, we do pass-throughs already in fees that we, there, there are pass-through fees, but that's one of the issues we're going to want to look at between now and town council. I don't think that we can definitively give you an answer on that tonight.
Commissioner Smith?
I would just like to make one practical comment here. It is very possible that $150,000 is not going to be enough. So, all I'm saying is, I think we should accept the generous offer and leave it to staff and the school district and the developer. But, but we are accepting, acknowledging, and recommending to the town council that they accept the developer's generous offer. I just hate to see us accept something that maybe it's going to come out in a different form.
If the, if the second year is prepared to-
Commissioner O'Donnell, can you turn your microphone on?
I guess I turned it off. I'm perfectly happy to go along with this recommendation. The second year apparently is too, so we would take that condition out of the motion. The record is, reflects clearly the offer, and that we're impressed by and grateful for the offer.
Commissioner Bushwell, you have some comments?
Just before you call the question, I have a clarification to the maker of the motion. Despite having earlier expressed concerns about the density, the motion is for 22 units. I just want to be clear on that.
The motion is for 22 units, and that, let me just say that the reason it's for 22 units, there is, all, I can understand the discomfort, but I don't understand what the suggestion would be in place of 22 units. And we don't have to have a number. And if we just say, hey, that's too much, I can understand that. But, but this one specifically says the applicant's request for 22, we, the motion would recommend approval.
Okay. Any other questions or clarification? Okay, so again, we have a motion, and we have a second, and it is for recommended approval at 22 with both BMPs on-site. Okay? So, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, so we, I fear we are at 3-3, and we have 10 minutes. So, would anyone like to provide another motion?
Is there really any point of doing that? I mean-
Let me, what is our, since it is a recommendation, what do we need, do we need a-
You could, you could forward it on, you've done this in the past, you could forward it on to the town council, since it's a, you know, you've got a tied vote, and then you could just each give your comments, which you already have, they're going to get your verbatim minutes, and just move it on, if that's your choice.
I would feel comfortable with that unless there are those that feel they can sway some other commission members. Commissioner Erickson?
I'm very uncomfortable with that opinion from the staff. We went down that road once before with an earlier project. It seems to me the proper way to think about this is that a motion was introduced to make a recommendation. That motion failed, so for lack of passing a motion, there is no recommendation being made to the town council. And so, there is no recommendation, and we've taken no action on the, on the matter in front of us tonight.
Commissioner O'Donnell, then Commissioner Johnson?
I'm not disagreeing with that comment. In fact, I'm speaking to another matter. When Commissioner Bushwell asked me about the 22, it strikes me that there may be a comfort level in one or two of the commissioners, which is a number, but I don't know how that could be. But I'm just saying, before we walk away from this, if someone is saying, you know, I'd be comfortable, and I understand that Mr. Robson wouldn't be, but I'm just trying to get where we are. Do the commissioners who oppose this motion have anything specific in mind? And I asked that question, and no one has to answer it, but I'm just curious.
No, I don't have a specific number in mind that would satisfy me, and I'm concerned about losing the opportunity for retail and commercial. So, as long as it's a motion to approve houses, I would still have a problem with it. And with respect to Commissioner Erickson's statement, I think we have taken an action. There is a motion, there are three people that said yes, there are three people that said no. We have one commissioner that's recused, who's always going to be recused. I don't think we're going to have a meeting of the minds, and I don't see why we can't say the action that the planning commission took was to split on the recommendation. And now, town council, you have our comments and go forth.
Would staff like to comment on, again, we, your interpretation is that a 3-3 could move forward without, with the, with comments, but without necessary recommendation?
Yes, you can move the matter forward on a 3-3 vote, and the council will have the verbatim minutes, and they will have read all your comments, so they will understand how each of you came to your decision on the vote.
If I understand Commissioner Erickson's concern, one of the other options is that commission could make a motion to, knowing that the, the first motion failed, there could be a motion to just move individual comments forward without a, a planning commission recommendation as an entire body tonight, and just move the individual comments forward, if that's what I understood procedurally one of your concerns was.
Commissioner Erickson, the, procedurally?
I would, I wouldn't want to repeat what I said before. In the absence of a motion being introduced and adopted, some motion, no, I would be on the record as saying, no action has been taken.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
And that's fine. We don't have to characterize it. We can pass this along by saying, they voted, it was three to three, and that's the end of the matter. We don't have to characterize it.
Absolutely.
And I would agree that no action essentially was taken. They had a vote and deadlocked, and that, my understanding, fails. But in any event, that's neither here nor there. They have all of our comments, they know what we did, and I don't think we have to characterize it, and that's the end of it, I think.
Commissioner Bushwell, you had your hand up?
I would like to just add one caveat to that, and that is, I think there was consensus on the BMP unit being off-site. That was the motion, I think, what I heard from, just speaking for myself, I support that, that makes it a majority. I also, with all due respect to Commissioners Seack and Jensen, I do support the residential use on the site, so that issue, again, I think would, would, in and of itself, would be a majority of the commission. My issue was with what Commissioner Jensen articulated about how a PD is being used in this case with open space and the density. Those are the issues for me.
Let me, let me try a motion then. That the, let me see if I can figure this out. I'll move that the commission forward the matter without a specific recommendation on the mitigated negative declaration, mitigated monitoring, monitoring program, or a specific recommendation on the plan development, and that, however, the commission would, would acknowledge that the, the appropriate use for the site is residential, and that it would recommend to the, and beyond the record, that in the event that, that were the, were the use, that having both, and whatever BMP units are required in conjunction with that development, whether it be one, two, three, depending upon what the density eventually is, that they would all be on-site.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Do we all understand the motion? Okay? So, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, this motion passes 5-1, with Commissioner Jensen dissenting. Chair Seack?
Yes. One more issue is, as long as the commission is trying to move some recommendations forward, I would ask the commission whether they would be willing to entertain a motion on the mitigated negdeck and mitigation monitoring program, to provide clear direction to council on that.
Commissioner Erickson's motion stated that there was no recommendation on that, correct?
All we're asking is for clarification, is there any interest in the commission of resolving that issue tonight?
It appears not, I see. Okay. Okay. So, staff, does that, do you have what you need? Okay. I'm hoping the applicant has what he needs, so, okay. Now, commissioners, it's 5 to, 5 to midnight, and we have one other item. We, do we need to make a motion if we are to move it to the next gen-
Is the, is the applicant for item?
Okay. So, we have one more item. How are commissioners feeling?
If I understand who the applicant is and recognize them and their, I believe that they're here, and their attorney's here to represent them, and have been here since seven o'clock, so I would be reluctant to continue the item, since they've been waiting five hours.
Okay. Let's, let's see if I can get consensus, and so I would also like to, I would, I do not want to push this to another time.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
I will be happy to be governed by the majority, but I will tell you that after this many hours, I for one, my performance will perhaps not be as good as it might have And that's the reason we have the rule.
Okay. So, I believe I need another motion to continue us past midnight, because the-
So moved.
Commissioner, okay. And do I have a second?
Can we limit it to a time?
Yes, you certainly can.
12:15.
Maker of the motion, is 12:15 sufficient?
12:15, 12:30, I think we should say.
Seconder, do you agree with 12:30?
With an encouragement toward last, yes.
Okay. So, we have a motion to move to 12:30. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. So, we're now at item number four. We are trying to find, oh, here we go, our lost commissioner. It is plan development application PD-11-003, located at 15055 and 15075 Los Gatos Boulevard. Good morning, Ms. Savage. Okay, whenever you're ready, we know we just pulled you, but we're ready for the staff report.
Okay. Good morning again, chair, commissioners. The applicant is currently requesting a plan development amendment to subdivide the building into 11 commercial condominiums and modify the allowed uses to permit, all uses permitted in the underlying CH zoning designation. If the planning, if the plan development amendment is approved for the conversion to condominiums, a subdivision application is required, and the condominium property lines would be defined at that time. If approved, staff recommends the application be reviewed by the development review committee level. In 1999, the town council adopted a PD ordinance to rezone the subject property to CHPD, demolish existing structures, and construct two commercial buildings to be used as retail and office. Town council found that the mix of both retail and office uses were consistent with the town's general plan and the Los Gatos Boulevard plan. The approved floor plans of the plan development ordinance indicated that retail use was on the entire second floor of the south building, and on a portion of the second floor on the north building, and that office uses were in all other areas. Although the plans show specific uses, the applicant believed that the ordinance was intended to allow any use allowed in the CH zone. The matter was referred to town council for interpretation, and in 2001, the town council considered the matter and determined that retail and office uses should be distributed consistent with the approved floor plans of the ordinance. As such, retail has been required on the entire second floor of the south building and a portion of the second floor on the north building. The underlying CH zoning designation does allow retail, personal service, office, and limited manufacturing as permitted uses. If the retail and general office is changed to allow medical office use in all portions of the building, as requested by the applicant, the traffic impacts would trigger the requirement for a traffic study, a finding for community benefit, and traffic mitigation fees. If the retail, I'm sorry, staff supports the proposed subdivision to commercial condominiums, provided that the retail use is retained pursuant to the approved PD. If the approved retail use is retained, and the remaining portion of the buildings were converted to medical office use, which is more than the existing office use, the net traffic increase would not trigger a traffic study, but would require community benefit and traffic mitigation fees. The desk item that you have tonight includes the applicant's proposed community benefit of monetary funds to be used for the Creekside Sports Park. Staff recommends the funds are allocated towards Oak Meadow Park, which has upgrades scheduled sooner than the development of the sports park. The desk item includes a modified community benefit performance standard, should the setting, pardon me, should the deciding body and the applicant concur with staff's recommendation for the use of the community benefit. The performance standard must be modified to reflect the community benefit deemed appropriate by the deciding body. The desk item also includes a revised required findings exhibit that includes the required sequo finding that was erroneously excluded from the original exhibit. Although the uses proposed by the applicant comply with the underlying CH zoning designation, based on past county, based on past town council action, town staff does not support the requested change in use for the retail spaces. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Savage. Commissioner Johnson?
I have a question regarding, it's on page four of our staff report analysis, a subdivision, and it's talking about the office condominiums, indicating that the business owners could own their condo instead of renting. So, I just want to understand what parameters, if any, there were on the proposed condominiums. Will it have to be the owner of a business living in the condo? And what if the business closes? Does the owner get to stay there and just have a condo? What, what about resale? Are we limiting it to a new business owner? So, it's interesting that it's an office condominium, what the concept is, but what I, what I'm getting at is, are we just converting it to condos?
Part of the request is just the condominium conversion. It is for commercial condominiums, so there'd be no residential use. The owner of the commercial condominium would not necessarily have to operate out of that, but it certainly creates the opportunity where a business owner, perhaps operating in office, would be able to own their own commercial space, as opposed to renting it from the owner of the entire building.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I, I wanted to make this disclosure in the beginning, and I did not. I want to disclose that in this past year, I have had discussions with Mr. Hirschman about commercial lease. It had nothing to do with this property, and, and I'm prepared to go forward, and I do not currently have any discussions with Mr. Hirschman.
Thank you. And also, are there any other disclosures any commissioners would like to make, other than site visit? Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay. Well, then I'm going to call the applicant. I don't have a speaker card from you, but when you, after you're done, if you could do that, thank you. And just state who you are.
I'm Bill Hirschman. I, my office is at 15585 Los Gatos Boulevard. Let me start by thanking you very much to spending your time here. You'll enjoy my presentation, I'm sure. I had a very long presentation, but I'm going to cut it very short, so why don't I cut to what I believe will be the, the question? The condominium concept, just let me clarify, they are commercial condominiums, there's no residential component whatsoever. We have done somewhere in the neighborhood of 150,000 feet of commercial condominiums over my career. They've all been very successful projects. What it does is exactly what staff was explaining, it gives a, a business owner a different opportunity. Unfortunately, Dr. Burnell ran out of gas, he left about two minutes before. We didn't think you were going to be so kind, so he left. But he was here to speak, he was going to be one of the potential purchasers of, of one of the condominium units. This concept was brought to me by actually a few tenants within the- This concept was brought to me by actually a few tenants within the existing building, who said, you know, would you consider doing this? And what's made it so attractive recently is the current rates. You heard that discussion earlier in the evening, with the economy the way it is and with the rates on loans and through the SBA, it's made this concept very attractive. And so, we proceeded ahead with that, and I'm more than willing to discuss that concept. But in general, what happens here is Thursday night, it'll be an office building owned by me, and on Friday morning, we open it up, and it's owned by several other tenants. There's no physical changes that take place, we've already gone through that process with the building department to make sure that we met all the requirements, both with fire and building. And really, as far as, from a planning point of view, there will not be anything that changes with regards to the appearance or the parking or anything else. I think the question here was really the retail component that was, and again, I'm more than willing to discuss that, but I'll leave that for your questions. The retail component came into effect back in the year 2000, and I will, I'm more than happy to share the history behind that. I'd love to share the history behind that. But what the reality of it was, there was a determination made back then that the approval that was made, contradictory to what our position was, but the approval that was made required a certain amount of retail within the ground floor of the project. If you're familiar with the project, it's a three-story building, and there's really two ground floors. There's the ground floor that faces Los Gatos Boulevard, and then there's a ground floor that faces the back parking lot, which is adjacent to what will be the North Forty. Our argument relative to that was that there was a plan that was approved that allowed all the uses within the CH zone. And that's really all we're requesting here tonight. We by no means want to not have you approve retail. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about, you know, the need for retail. We are not suggesting, nor do I want you to, when you consider this, think that we're trying to eliminate the retail component. We're simply asking that we can be open to all spaces. And let me just share with you sort of the punishment that we've gone through as a result of the way we were zoned. I lost a furniture store, a pharmacy, an eye doctor, two financial planners, two banks, and two restaurants, that if I came in front of you over the time periods, because none of those met the definition that we were given for a retail component. And it's been very painful, very painful. And so, all we're asking now is to allow us to sell these units to any user. I will share with you that one of the buildings, the smaller building, will be sold to a dentist who wants to occupy what's under contract, contingent on your approvals, but under contract, where he is planning on retaining two of the retail tenants. He would convert one of the small spaces to his office and retain the other two retail tenants. We see the retail market there becoming very viable in the future. But if any of you can tell me when the North Forty is going to build out, we thought it was going to be 10 years ago. We're going on 12 now. I'm going to run out of time, so I'm going to make it quick. But our only request is that you allow us any use under the CH zone, but by no means eliminating the retail component. And that's really, in a very short summation, what we're requesting here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Hirschman, in terms of the retail, there's a required square foot requirement, is there not?
The way that the plan was interpreted was that there was a certain amount of square footage that would be allocated to retail. Staff or the town may disagree, but from our position, the reason for that is very similar to the reason that we calculated the traffic on this go-around. Because the retail was a more intense component, we had to state how much of the building would be retail so that we could analyze traffic.
Well, if I could just add the question, the question then is, you gave the example of the dentist, so when he buys his space, he will have the retail component in his space?
He is, his intention is to purchase the entire small building, which is about 5,000 square feet roughly. He is planning on, there's three suites in there currently. He is planning on occupying one of those suites, and the two tenants, and one is edible arrangements, and the other one is a salon.
But my question is, well, if he should sell it in the future, is the next person going to be, is it going to-
No, the next person would not be, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's what I'm trying to get to. So, eventually, the retail could go away.
Absolutely. Or it could be put back in, vice versa. It's not, that's what we're asking for, that it not be restricted, so that we could have a dentist one day and a very nice home store another day. So that any tenant would be able to be in the building. And we have seen that turn over, just in the building where we are.
But are your CCNRs going to, I don't know how you're going to do that and be in compliance with the requirement that there be retail.
Well, we're asking for that requirement, that's what we're asking for this evening, is for that requirement to be waived.
And then, I understand.
My CCNRs, to answer your question, will provide for all uses, actually, the town attorney has reviewed our CCNRs and made that very appropriate comment, that our CCNRs should address every use under the CH zone.
You answered. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We do not have any speaker cards on this matter, so you have additional three minutes, or we can just close public testimony and-
Unless there's another question, if there's any other questions.
Any other questions?
And I get, well, the only comment I would add, this falls into that category, again, where unfortunately, you don't get to make the ultimate decision. And so, I would simply request, with all due respect, that we can get some kind of motion. I certainly would prefer to have your approval, but, and I certainly would rather resolve it this evening, but unfortunately, this one goes to council. So, I appreciate your moving it forward for us. Thank you very much.
Sure. And thank you for your patience tonight. Okay, Commissioners, I'm closing the public testimony. Any questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I assume that the retail restriction, well, let me start. The retail restriction was imposed by the town council, planning commission, how did it get there?
It was imposed by the original project approval, which town council was the approving body, and then it was confirmed by town council as well.
And I assume that retail restriction arose out of a desire to have retail in that area? And we've been discussing these issues for a long time. They want to have retail, or we want to have retail in certain areas, and that's why this was requested or imposed here?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, any comments? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I guess my comment is, if we assume for the moment that the decision originally was correct, I've heard no evidence tonight, which would suggest to me that anything has happened in that area to have us change our mind. I mean, I'm sympathetic with the owner, but maybe the fact that it's late and we didn't get it back around, but I've heard no evidence which would suggest to me that the original restriction to require retail is somehow now wrong and therefore ought to be changed. So, my view would be, we follow staff's recommendation.
I agree with you. Is that a motion?
Let me make a motion. Okay. Did you get it? Okay, the motion would be that we find that the zone change, plan development amendment, is consistent with the general plan, Exhibit Two. We forward a recommendation for approval of the plan development application, Amendment PD-11003, Exhibit Eight, to the town council, which parenthetically will continue the restriction of commercial, retail, as described. And is there any, under CEQA, I think that's already been taken care of, so-
That's correct, so-
So, that's the motion.
That's the motion. Commissioner Jensen?
Are you intending to include the proposed community benefit as modified to Oak Meadow Park?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor of the mo-
You need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought it was a second. Commissioner, tell us for, will you second?
I will second that motion for the reasons stated-
Thank you.
And the community benefit.
So, we have a motion, we have a second. Commissioner Smith, do you have a comment?
Well, I do have a comment, and my comment is that 10 years ago, retail was required there, but as we all know, who are familiar with the area, retail never blossomed there, for lack of a better word. And there's a reason for that, and the reason is because the hospital expanded and the need for medical dental offices expanded with it. And so, if I understand the ordinance correctly, the ordinance requires an entire floor to be retail. And I think imposing that at this time in the development of that part of Los Gatos Boulevard is a very difficult challenge. And I mean, I didn't ask that to Mr. Hirschman, but that's just my understanding from my own business experience. That's one of the comments I just want to make. I mean, we're imposing something that may leave a vacant space anyway.
I just want to comment, I completely understand and am sympathetic to that. And I guess in the best of scenarios, this proposed use discussion could be in sync with what would happen with the North Forty, as the specific plan is coming into place. But I understand that we can't hold one at a halt while we discuss and negotiate the other. I'm hesitant at this point to change the use until that actual specific plan comes about, because the specific plan will incorporate all of that area. I'd like to refrain from changing it and see what that discussion ensues. Commissioner O'Donnell?
We're not imposing anything, we are keeping what is already there, and I would say this, I'm not disagreeing with Commissioner Smith, except to the extent there's nothing in the record, and her comments are only in the record as comments. And normally, you make a decision based on evidence. We don't have any evidence. We can all have feelings, but to change this, you would need some evidence that this is not only good for the applicant, but it's good for the town, and why. And the good news is, it's 12:20, the applicant is perfectly happy because he knows he's going to go to council anyway, but I'm just saying, I don't believe there's anything in the record before us which would allow us to change the existing restriction. We are not imposing it, we're just not changing it.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and call the, oh, Commissioner Erickson.
I'm sympathetic both with Commissioner Smith's position, and but believe that Commissioner O'Donnell has provided the right guidance.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye? Aye. Anyone opposed? Is that a nay? Yes. So, the motion passes six-one with one in opposition, and that's Commissioner Smith. Yes, okay. This goes straight to council, so there's no appeal rights. And Ms. Beale, any updates from community development?
Just that council approved the architecture and site for the Albright development.
Commissioners, any commission matters? Okay, we're adjourned. Okay, we're adjourned.